Vice sir Charles McCaras, we'll hear the Dance Rhapsody number two by Frederick Delius.
It's 4:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to today's Salina City Commission meeting. If I could get everybody to stand that is able, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Oh, sorry, I needed to call the...
Well, we'll go ahead.
Everyone's already standing, then we'll call them out.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if I can get a roll call, please.
Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Sorry, my papers got shuffled here, so I'm trying to get on track. I think everybody's is. All right. We do have an award and a proclamation. Shirley Jakes is here with the Salina Areas Workers Coalition. She will read our Labor Day proclamation. Mrs. Jakes?
Thank you.
Nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you.
It has, it's been a long time.
And to the mayor and the members of the Salina City Commission, I do want to thank you for this opportunity to read this proclamation celebrating the working people of Salina and Seline County and our area. Labor Day proclamation, September the 2nd, 2013. Whereas Labor Day was first celebrated in New York City in 1892 and declared a national holiday by President Grover Cleveland in 1894, designating it as a day to recognize and pay tribute to the economic and social achievements made to society by all workers. And whereas the city of Salina and the county of Seline exemplify what can be accomplished by the efforts and talents expended over the years by generations of hard-working men and women. And whereas it is vital that the economic development of Salina and Seline County advance, to that end, we, the Salina Area Workers Coalition, urge you to pursue those industries that have demonstrated respect and appreciation of their employees. Therefore, it is appropriate that I, Barb Shirley, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim September the 2nd, 2013, as a time to celebrate and honor the labor of all of our citizens.
Thank you, Shirley. I do have your signed proclamation up here. Do you have any activities planned that's coming up?
Yes. We have a concert planned for the evening of September the 2nd, Monday, from 5:00 to 8:00 down at Ad Astra. There will be six area musicians showing their talents at that concert. Ann Zimmerman, Don Wagner, Matt Sonnenweaver, Ashley Wheeler, Deborah Stovall, and Ruby Tilton. In addition to that, if someone has something they want to sound off on in great labor fashion, there will be a soapbox for that person to... orate one to their... well, not to their heart's consent, probably one minute. But anyway, we do hope that you all will come down and celebrate Salina's labor with all of us. And thank you for this opportunity.
When is that, Shirley?
Monday, September the 2nd.
This coming Monday?
Yes.
Sounds like Monday.
It's coming Monday. It's right away, so don't miss it. We'll look for you all.
Well, thank you. And Shirley, I have this for you. All right, now we move on to citizens' forums. This is an opportunity for any citizens that would like to come up and speak about anything that's not on today's agenda. If you could come up and give us your name and address.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor and county commissioners, city commissioners. I greatly appreciate for this opportunity. I'm Tracy Sin at 340 and 1/2 South Connecticut. Last Sunday, I was taking my car for a drive. Usually I take it for a half an hour drive, you know, down on the freeway. And I had a cop that followed me for a half an hour, I mean, a mile, and stopped me. And he told me that he had to do what he had to do to make his boss happy. I think that's corruption. And the other thing is that he gave me a warning for improper driving lane, hand roadway, and I sure like to see that in video camera, if he has one, in person, preferably, in private. And I'd like to discuss this matter furthermore with the... who's ever in charge of these, Salina Police Department. Because to me, I was followed for about a mile, and I was asked, frankly, what type of medication am I taking? What is it for? I didn't know that I was being seen by a psychiatrist and a medication doctor. This is the police department speaking. And he asked me if I was drunk. I said, "No, officer, I don't drink. I'm just taking my car out for a ride for a half an hour, so that way my engine will run smoothly." And I don't know if they do racial profiling. I don't know if they're corruption in the Salina Police Department. But there needs to be a thorough investigation of why do they do the thing that they do. And I'm not satisfied with a warning ticket, because I don't deserve to have a warning ticket. If I was improper driving on a lane or a hand, I should be stopped within about a quarter a mile or 1/4 a mile, not following me around, see what type medication am I taking. It's none of his business. And first of all, don't tell me you're doing this because you have to make your boss happy. That is not my problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I can help you out a little bit there. If he was in the wrong lane, all those questions would be relevant. So it's pretty easy to check. I'd be happy to work with the police department. I presume there may be video, there may not be, but I'll be happy to check and see if they follow their procedure and report back.
I was followed about a mile to where I'm heading. And if I was driving and swirling or whatever in the lane, shouldn't I have been stopped there and then, instead of following me around? Because I was not swirling, I was doing exactly what everybody's doing.
Okay. And I think Jason will follow up with you with that.
It's just uncalled for.
Yeah. It's a possibility they may have been just running the tag and waiting to get that back.
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, I can tell you from my experience, you know, people think you're following them. Not from a... I mean, from the following car, not the car being followed. Well, I've had that too. But I mean, it does, a lot of times you've got to call and you've got to wait for traffic on the radio to clear, get that tag back.
You want the traffic at four.
No, 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 no. I mean, the radio traffic. Sometimes you have to wait, there's another call that's maybe a priority, so you wait to call your tag in before you make your stop. And he could have, if he suspected maybe there was alcohol involved, he may have just been sort of fallen to seed, but...
Dude, I go to church on Sunday, two times a day on Sundays. That's the last time I want to get up.
Is there anybody else I'd like to approach the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the 2014 Budget. Sub item 5.1A, Second Reading Ordinance Number 13-10708, adopting the 2014 budget. Item 5.1B, Second Reading Ordinance Number 13-10709, declaring the necessity for a tax increase. Item 5.1C, Resolution Number 137033, establishing various fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule.
Mr. Franz. I got it right the first time. I've been practicing it.
Yeah, in front of the mirror.
I say 50 times every day, Franz.
Now, if you can get Deon's.
I know, that's a tough one.
Yeah. This is a rehearing of the proposed 2014 budget. There was a hearing originally scheduled and actually held on August 5th. And as a result of that, the city commission directed staff to republish a notice of hearing and provide the flexibility to increase property tax levy in an amount up to two mils, should that be necessary, pending resolution of three remaining issues. One of those was the outcome of negotiations regarding future operations of the Health Department, possibility of allocating additional resources to maintenance and rehabilitation of the street system within the city, and to stop the depletion and begin rebuilding our general fund operating balance. According to state statute, a public hearing is required to be held on proposed budget with 10 days' notice prior. Notice of hearing was timely published. Property tax levy now possible, should you choose to do so, is 28.19 mils, a potential increase of two mils compared to the final tax levy for 2013. Each year has its own set of budget challenges. This year, the major challenges include slow economic recovery nationally, but that belies the fact in Salina, the sales taxes are still stagnant in 2013 after a modest recovery in 2012. We are now taking sales taxes in at about the same rate as we were in 2008. So we're about five years of essentially no growth, and actually a decline for a couple of years in between. Property values are still stagnant. All the delinquency rates on property taxes have returned to pre-recession levels. Sales and property taxes provide about 35% of our total city revenues and about 66% of the general operations and debt service revenues. Recession's also resulted in declining returns from investment of funds held temporarily by the city. Interest rates are at all-time lows. We project our interest income in the general fund to be about $10,000 for 2013. Consider that pre-recession, that was on the order of $425,000. We're still dealing with the impact of the exemption of business machinery and equipment from personal property taxation. One of the results of that is that our total property tax amounts have not grown substantially in the last probably five years. I believe the average is about 3/10ths of a percent per year. The personal property exemption is costing us somewhere in the order of a half a million dollars annually at this point. That will likely increase for another couple of years, probably a somewhat slower rate than it has appeared before. One of our strategies over the past five years to minimize service impacts of the recession was a measured drawdown of fund reserves, particularly in the general fund. As the economy gradually improves, restoration of those balances to an appropriate level should be... remain a priority. The current targeted value for the general fund is $5 million. The amount currently projected for the close of 2014, absent any change, is $2,827,000 and some change. This presumed continued joint operation of the Health Department, as well as no change in the tax levy amounts. As a matter of reference, I guess, at the close of 2007, the balance was just a shade over $5 million. So we're, in effect, simply trying to restore ourselves to where we had been at that point. Strategies to address this set of circumstances have included the following. Review and reduction where appropriate of all budget line item requests. There's no general adjustment or cost of living to the pay plan structure for 2014. The 2014 budget as published does contemplate a merit system allowance average of about 2%. Staffing's been reduced from 511 full-time positions in 2008 to 463 positions for 2014. That's a reduction of 2 in the last year. And we continue to review openings for potential to eliminate or consolidate duties and positions. I would add that that staff reduction is not all in the general fund. That is obviously proportional. A number of those were utility funds, which wouldn't affect the general fund operations. But it has been an across-the-board attempt. Increasing in a comprehensive fashion fees and charges to city services, and now consideration of changing the tax rate by up to two mils, and continued reliance on tax stabilization transfers and special sales tax, which is projected at $800,000 for 2014. That is the same as it has been for the last several years. Budget incorporates existing city operations with issues and options, as we've discussed. Go through those briefly. Reauthorize a one-year extension to the Economic Development Contract with Salina Area Chamber of Commerce at $175,100, with a direction to staff to begin working on modifying the contract and exploring changes to that model. Provide $25,000 to Project Open in 2014, keeping with our original commitment to that program. Continue current arrangements with Visits Salina for convention and tourism services. Continue funding for Salina Downtown Incorporated through the Business Improvement District Number One, and provide additional operating supplements, $38,000 from the Economic Development Sales Tax, and also to fund the Development and Sentiment Program for $50,000 for 2014, also from the Economic Development portion of the Special Sales Tax. Fund municipal ban from the general fund at an amount of $17,575 for 2014. We are going to place the Skyfire funding in the operating budget for 2014 and future years. That means it will not come back to use as a specific item. It will appear in the Recreation Department budget. Health Department operations, the issue is apparently moving towards resolution. City of Salina, as I understand, has now, at least tentatively, is considering contributing $500,000 towards rehabilitation of the roof structure, and will allow up to $250,000 of the city's share of the Health Department fund balance to be applied to the project. The remainder of the city's share of that net fund balance will be returned to the city of Salina when Seline County assumes full operational responsibility and all encumbrances have been paid. The exact amount of that remaining balance is not yet known. Finally, City of Salina will need to establish an animal control function with related costs added to our budget. Net effect of that on 2014 budget, and I'm not going to go through the detailed calculation, but considering the revenues allocable to the animal control function, the net effect on our budget would be a reduction of $618,695. That calculates out to about 1.528 mils. One thing to consider in relation to this, and I'll talk a little bit more about it later, is if we do that, we also lose approximately $190,000 in sales tax next year, because there is a relationship between the property tax levies and the sales tax we get in the following year. Public transportation funded at the existing amount of $556,300, plus a small amount to recover the costs associated with the Health Department temporary facility stop on North Street. Building authority is funded as requested at $448,000. There will be a general increase to fees and charges as proposed in the attached resolution. Sanitation fees will increase by about 2% from 1340 to 1365 a month, with similar adjustments to the ancillary fees in that operation. Solid waste fee adjustments are deferred pending the outcome of a continuous process improvement assessment for that operation related to the changes in our McPherson County contract. EMS fees, we'll defer those until we get provider fee schedules, until the new schedules are released. That probably will happen in sometime in the first quarter of 2014. And that way, we can target our fees to maximize the return from those items and hopefully minimize the effect on patients with respect to co-pays and so on. Water and wastewater, we'll defer the rate assessment until current year performance is a little more known. That's probably going to happen in October sometime, as we get through September and have a little better idea of what the revenue flow is for this year, which I would have to say at this point doesn't look terribly promising, because it's been wet and cool, and so we would expect revenues to be down. Fund balance targets are unchanged. Staffing, authorized staffing of 463 full-time positions. Authorized allowance continuing with a 2% to cover merit plan increases. Health insurance is authorized to continue with a 5% increase in projected costs to be shared proportionately with employees. Property taxes. City of Salina has had a steadily declining tax rate from at least 1990, when the rate was 30.015 mils. And actually, I looked back a little further than that, just for giggles, you know? Accountants do strange things sometimes. But prior to 1990, it had been at 36.36 mils, and had been at that level for, I believe, eight to 10 years, as near as I can tell from the record. So it was 36 at that point, dropped to 30. And then through the 90s and into the early 2000s, it continued to be reduced, reaching a low of 23.789 mils for budget year 2007. That was due to good sales tax returns and good assessment valuation growth, which enabled us to be able to reduce that tax rate. As a result, Salina has long experienced one of the lowest property tax rates in the state among first-class cities. For budget 2009, the rate was increased to 25.886 mils, and has remained relatively stable through 2013, which was at 26.19 mils. That increase for 2009 was related to a couple of different factors, including the first years of revenue loss due to machinery and equipment exemption, implementation of the City Go Fixed Route Service, which was done at that time, some losses in interest income, as I referred to earlier. There's some pay plan adjustments, and some particularly steep cost increases in fuel costs, and of course, the beginning of the recessionary period. Published budget provides for a maximum levy of 28.19 mils, based on city commission's direction. It's important to consider the effect, the changes in the Seline County levy, and likewise in city levy, and the relationship between the two have on sales tax distributions in the following years. And I've tried to point those differences out as we talk about some of the options. These options are not necessarily the only options you have. You could pick and choose anywhere in between any of them, and we can, of course, make that happen. Option one, take the savings, reduce the mill levy, or take the savings and reduce the mill levy as a result of the Health Department changes. That would... that savings would amount to $618,695. However, it would also reduce our total revenues by $809,580, and we would have to make up that difference in some manner, most likely of which, at this point, is to further reduce our reserves by that amount. Option two, leave the mill levy at 26.19 mils, and apply the net proceeds to enhance street repairs, reserve restoration, which are the two items that you wish to consider. There would be a net increase of about $505,000 in that event. If we increase the mill levy to 26.69 mils, that's an increase of a half a mil, that would provide additional amount for those programs of $729,000. A one-mil increase would likewise provide a net additional amount of $953,142. This option is the first option of the five presented that would totally eliminate the need for a tax supplementation or a tax stabilization transfer from the special sales tax, which is $800,000. And of course, this option would provide just a shade more than that. And finally, increasing the mill levy to 28.19 mils, which would be the maximum permitted under the terms of the publication, would provide a net additional amount for the street program reserves recovery at $1,399,761. Budget as published contemplates a total city mill levy of 28.190 mils. Total taxes levied would change from $10,577,046 to $11,414,278. City commission may select a levy amount up to, but not exceeding, that published number. I've shown there on the request for city commission action, the effects for $100,000 worth of property value, this is based on residential, but essentially, the taxes for that sort of property would increase from $301.19 to $324.19, or a change of $23. That would be the maximum two-mil change. Recommended actions, following actions should be taken. Number one is open the public hearing to take comments or requests related to the budget proposal. Number two is by motion, presumably after discussion, determine the desired mill levy rate and how you would like the results of that be distributed between reserve restoration and street repair. Number three is pass ordinance number 13-10,00708 on second reading, which adopts and appropriates the 2014 annual budget. Number four, pass ordinance number 13-10,0709, declaring the necessity for a tax increase. And that would have to be done with any of the options presented. And number five is pass resolution 13-733, establishing various fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule. Would point out that there were a couple of last-minute changes to the fee schedule. I laid those at your place. Essentially, there was an error of omission regarding a right-of-way excavation permit change. It's on page 41. There were some description changes that were applied to the wrong item on page 15, as well as addition of a billboard sign category. And there was a, I believe it was a scrap metal registration application fee. I had listed as changing the fee, but we cannot do that, because it's a statutory maximum. And with that, I would stand for questions.
All right. Seeing this, I guess I wondered where we got... who sets the target level for the rainy day fund or the general fund? Is that just the commission?
The city commission does.
Okay. I mean, I don't remember where that came from, but...
Yeah. And essentially, we try to set it so that it is somewhere in the order of 15% to 20% of our annual operating revenues. That's about a two-month reserve. We think that is a level that is... provides us with enough flexibility to deal with any changes that might come along in the immediate term. It's also based somewhat on our assessment of what bond rating agencies might expect.
I... it's... I know you told us this in the meeting, but it's really disconcerting to me that it's... when I see it in print, that we're that much below what the targeted balance is.
Just so you know, the old target level was at 3.4 million, and we recently changed that to five.
Okay.
Because it had been at 3.4 for many years, and inflation essentially caught up with us, and it was no longer at that 17% or 20% level. And so we just thought it was time to change.
So the rating folks don't have anything to do with what they consider or recommend?
You know, that's a consideration. Obviously, this last time around, they thought that we were lower than it should be, and there was a consequence to that.
Okay.
So that is a consideration also.
At what point in the reserve level do you start losing sleep?
He's already lost.
He's already lost.
He never sleeps.
Or makes you nervous? I don't know how to answer that.
He doesn't sleep and he's always nervous.
Commissioners, the, one way to answer that is to look at, is the trend. When we look at the last couple of years towards the end of last year, we were, well, middle of last year, we thought we were okay, going to be a little bit above 3 million by the end of last year and at the last six months of last year, we were wrong. The revenues really, especially the sales tax stopped growing and we were lower than we expected, we were under 3 million and so, and we've been fighting the stability aspect since the 2008 budget, since the beginning of the recession and as many folks know, the assessed valuations have been completely flat since then. We've had a couple, a year, pretty good sales tax year a couple of years ago, last year even though it fell off was okay, but other than that, it's been fairly flat as well and other revenues have been flat. And that's actually expected when you go through recession and typically what we've seen is that our revenue recovery lags behind the recession and so technically the country and the area is out of a recession but it doesn't always feel like it. That's the thing and when we've seen that stagnant revenue number and that lack of growth for the most part for the last few years, we're into about the seventh or eighth budget now and so the problem is, is that we had ended up last year lower even than three which was below our target. We really thought we would end up pretty close to our target and then we're into this year still being stagnant, struggling to make changes to even get it to three and then wanting to preserve it in 2014 by the end of next year and that means we have to predict almost a year and a half out in advance and that's really difficult to do. And so we potentially in that, you know, roughly 16, 17-month timeframe could establish a pretty negative trend and so the thing that we want to do, what causes me, I can't speak for Rod and what causes him to sleep at night, but for me, it's to be below the target and below the old target particularly, let alone the new target.
Right.
And not be sure where a trend's going to go in the future and to go even more negative. If we go more negative in the next year, we'll be coming back to you with probably an approach to priority program cuts that will include people and layoffs and all the direct expenses associated with those. We've been able through attrition and selective attrition and strategic reductions and a lot of work from our department heads to avoid that at this point in time. We'd like to continue to avoid that, but that would be the next step if we can't get that fund balance where we want, get our finances where we want them to be. So I wouldn't consider them fully unstable at this point, but they're not as stable as what we'd like to see.
Right. I think it's important maybe for the people at home to understand that, that it wasn't, there was a little talk about when our ratings change and it's really the way that the ratings are looking at cities. It's not just Salina specifically. We've had Detroit, we've all had all these, Stockton, California, all of these, these cities declaring bankruptcy. Now, Salina's never found itself in that. We've been a pretty good, pretty good balancer of our budget, but the idea is, is that the rating companies just want to see a little bit more and our idea is, is we want to give them that because that, that rating is way more valuable at getting better interest rates than the perceived tax increase that's costing the citizens. It's better in the long run to have these lower interest rates.
I think the terminology Moody's used was to, they kind of look at the entire public sector with kind of a negative outlook.
Right.
And, and those are the kinds of circumstances when we do need a bit more of a reserve simply because they are fearful there's, you know, general discontent, general, there are some general problems with the public sector, national conditions at this point.
Yeah, pessimism is really probably one way to...
Healthy pessimism.
You know, and Jason's city manager is exactly right about trends having influence and how you feel about, you know, 3 million I may not feel terribly badly about if sales tax was growing and if property values were growing and if we had some positive outlook, if we still, you know, if we thought we had really clearly identifiable places where we could, where we could eliminate expenses in the future, but you know, we've been through a lot of that and there's not just any place that I can think of anywhere that's real clear-cut that there are, or there is a bundle of savings potential. I mean, we constantly work at it, but you know, without eliminating service provision, you know, it gets to be difficult and we've been through, what, four years of trying to ratchet down and so reserves that are certainly under 3 million, you know, I'd have to say I do lose, you know, it is a matter of concern.
What would you consider a rainy day? I mean, something that would take away this, what we have?
The prototypical rainy day in Salina would be a storm coming through town and, you know, just think about something like Joplin.
Yeah.
It could be a true rainy day.
Yeah, I understand what he's saying.
Another thing that we have to look at is that we've had, we've had quite a bit of success in the last eight to 10 years with regards to our health insurance program and we have a million and a half target in that fund balance just in case. It wasn't many years prior to the last eight to 10 years where the city had a really bad year, almost wiped out nearly a million dollars in their reserve. And so what happens is, is if, let's just say we had a really bad year and all, if it was a bad claim year is what that means and you're going down 800,000 to a million dollars, that fund balance could take it, but then your goal is to build it back up.
Right.
So then you have to look at the challenge of, you need to build that back up, you've got to build your general fund back up, you've got possibly and potentially slightly higher costs of your bond issuances, you've got salaries at this point that are very conservatively low for next year, lower than a lot of other communities. At some point, as the economy improves, the competition for the best and brightest becomes more difficult for us and if our pay plan's too far behind, we won't be able to compete. And as much as we'd like to think that being in Salina should be the reward, we like Salina as a community, unfortunately, people put a calculator to it sometimes and that's not even something we're addressing in this year's budget. That's a future issue to address as well as just the cost of typical equipment replacement, some of those things. So what happens is that things start to compound and we talked about some of those cities like Stockton, California. A lot of those cities made really dumb entrepreneurial-type decisions and took themselves out of a typical government realm. We will not be, you will not have to deal with bankruptcy, but you could have to deal with some pretty serious priority cuts that are painful and could fill up a room for each and every topic that you talk about. That's a possibility still.
Do you remember the, the cost of the ice storm? That was incurred by the city.
I don't, we did get some FEMA reimbursement and I, off the top of my head, I don't remember what percentage of the total costs were received.
Have been a significant dent in the reserve?
I'd almost have to go back and look. I don't want to answer out of ignorance.
Yeah, I don't recall it.
It could have pulled it back a little bit, but some of that's timing and FEMA doesn't give you back everything, but it can give you, they can give you back quite a lot.
That was a pretty big deal.
So we'd have to look at that. But, you know, we went through an ice storm, we also had two floods, all three were declarations.
Right.
So we had three declarations in a matter of, within a year and a half or so and that was after a drought, so.
I know that strangely absent was our raise up here on the city commission. What, how, what's going on there?
That's outside of my purview.
Oh, is that right? Hey, just, just out of curiosity, I think it's important that the reporters get this. When was the last raise the city commission had to our massive $3,600 a year salary?
I, I...
Was it before your time?
It had to have been because I don't recall one.
And how long's that been?
It was, eight years as a city manager.
Eight, eight years.
Pete Brannigan was on the city commission.
It happened after I was on board, so it was somewhere between eight and six.
1999, I was, I was just informed by a former, a three-time mayor, Alan Gilke in the back there. So 1999, $3,600. I understand some other people got the 2% raise this year. I saw some people from another...
Well, I think when we see that...
You've got to love this job.
I think when we see that reserve fund, I mean, I don't know, it kind of just hit me that it was in print and I knew you'd told us before, but that's, that's lower than I would like for it to be.
It is, it is a little bit disconcerting.
Yes, it is.
Certainly to see it under 3 million, that is, that really has our attention, I think and the fact that we can't seem to move it anywhere.
It's been sitting there at that amount for quite a while.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Brands, on the countywide equalization and the effect of Effectively, it's by lowering our mill levy while everybody else is raising, we take a hit on that equalization countywide.
That's essentially correct. The, the sales taxes, they're adjusted twice a year, the distribution's adjusted twice a year. In July, they're adjusted to our population estimates. Well, and, and the distribution in Sling County is between Sling, Sling County, the city of Salina and the four or five other smaller cities within the county that get a piece of the, of the sales tax. Well, between Salina and Sling County, it's about 98% of the tax distribution and our populations, while they might change a little bit up and down relative to each other, are really pretty stable and so what's left is the, is the tax effort which they adjust in January every year. And you're exactly right, if, if our levy goes down and Sling County's goes up, then that changes the distribution to their favor and if ours goes up and theirs goes down, it comes the opposite ways and over the years, it's gone a little bit one way or the other. I think if you looked at the relative mill levies, Sling County's mill levy has gone up more than ours have and to be totally fair, that's partly due to the fact that they rely more on the, on the property tax than we do. It's a larger proportion of their budget than ours is, so they, they have less, less control over that than we do. We just have a more diverse revenue base and it's nothing that, you know, typically when we go through this process, we don't know that until we're through and done with. However, also typically, there hasn't been the kind of disparity that there is this year with the three-mil change on one side for, you know...
So, so over the past six years, when the county has raised their mill levy, they've also taken a bigger portion than we have of the, of that sales tax as well?
Of the distribution has changed. I forget what the percentages are, but it's, it's shifted several percentage points over the years.
And you had noted that option four, the one, the one-mil increase to 27.19 and that's assuming that the Health Department's still in there and everything else.
Yeah.
That's the point at which you'd be virtually a break-even or, or the loss on that equalization would occur?
Actually, the break-even point is just a little bit more than two mils change on our part.
Okay, little, little more than two mils change.
Yeah.
So, option three, would I be right in saying that that's probably, we're still on the downside about 80,000?
Yes.
Okay. And would that be in line with...
Yeah, a half, a half mil, we're down about 90,000 actually on the sales tax.
Okay, about 90,000, okay. And so would that be pretty much on par or average for the last several years that, or would that be different?
I, I, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can, I can dig that out somewhere, but I, I couldn't say for sure.
There's a chance that that is probably close. Okay.
Commissioners, just as an FYI, we, if you look at the mill rates and Rod made reference to the mill rate in 99 levied for 1990, the city's was about 30, so it was more than it is today. Sling County's was just barely over 19 and in that time, there's, there's a lot of little micro-changes because what happens is, is you have to set that rate and so do they before the final valuation process is done. So it can move it up, you know, maybe even as much as a tenth or somewhere in there. So you see a little bit of that, but in that timeframe, the cities increased the mill levy other than those types of increments just once and that was for the 2008, looks like for the 2008 budget year and so that's why ours is just a little over 26 right now from 30 way back then. The, the change when the city was higher and the county was lower, when that changed the other way, looks to be, looks to be about, let's see here, 2002 levy for 2003. Salina's was 24.092 mils and Sling County's was 25.657. That's when there was a switch and the, the actual county mill became higher than the city mill. A lot of people don't know that, some people don't care, it's, I'm not playing a value judgment to it, just so you know what it is. And then from that point on, there was an increase and then in the next year, slight increase the following year, held on pretty firm for the county and then in 2008 for 2009, there's an increase, 2009 for 2010, there was an increase, stayed the same, there was another increase in 2010 for 2011 and then 2011, 2012.
It was about, it was about in the 2008, 2009 timeframe when the Extension Council split off too, right?
Yeah, and it, yeah, it shows them separate.
So that would be about, about a mil and a half that got...
Yeah, so there was a timeframe which their mill levy went up, not every year, but most of those years in the last five or six years.
I didn't mean to beat a dead horse, but how many of those were raises?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm just reading off the sheet.
Make for some interesting reading at home players.
The, the other number that kind of jumps out, man, if you could, could maybe shed some light on this is the, on the budget challenges, number two, the general fund revenues. Well, I'm sorry, is that what, looking at the number, yeah, I think it's number two. On, on, on the first page, it's the, the interest.
The interest, yes. You know, there's a difference when you earn 6.5% on your investments and when you earn 2/10 of a percent.
Right.
I renewed some CDs, so I...
And, and you have to realize, as you do now, that our balances have also declined, so that means less because of that reason.
Right.
And that's the, you know, there's, there's really a pretty profound change there from several hundred thousand a year to several thousand a year.
Right. Well, 425, 425,000 to 10,000 in two-year period is pretty substantial, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that revenue source has ebbed and flowed a little bit as the markets do, always has, you know. In the late 90s, it was great and then there was a period of time in the early 2000s where it nearly went away and then it recovered partway and now it's gone again, so...
Commissioners, just kind of to finish a thought back on the mill levies as well. My point in illustrating that, that history is, has nothing to do with how those funds were used because we deal with our budget and it's up to the county to deal with theirs. The point though is, is that each year there was more of a spread, it affected the sales tax amount from that countywide sales tax.
And that's, and that's kind of what I was hoping for an illustration of is that there's that factor as well that's, tends to be a drain and, and I think it also kind of starts to illustrate some of the different challenges that we have in that it's not just a real simple thing where, boy, you lower your mill levy and everything's, everything's great. We actually lose...
There's, there's a lot of things that touch each other.
Right.
And...
And then just my last, my last question and my concern looking forward is that I know we're, we're addressing street repair and pavement management and we had a great study session last week that really illustrated quite dramatically the challenges that we face and I don't know if that's available to be online or when it's completed, we could get it online, but I think that if we could get it on our website, I think people would really see the numbers that we're looking at and how, how big of a challenge we, we face and why I think it's important of all of us here that we really get ahead of that curve and, and get that taken care of. But the one thing that we don't address on here on this, we look at the rainy day fund and we look at the streets, but the, using the sales tax as sort of the stabilization is kind of a habit that we're going to have to face pretty soon.
And, and if you, if you were to take the, I guess it's the one-mil option that covers that amount, if you were to take that and shift that to street repair, what would happen? What I will do is we will budget that street repair out of the sales tax fund and we will stop supplementing the general fund then in that amount. So in effect, what's happening is you would be challenging, channeling this tax change into providing street repairs, but it would also eliminate that, that subsidy.
So it'd be a double benefit?
Yeah, so that, those aren't add-ons there. You can cover them with, with one action.
Right. I appreciate you clarifying that because... I appreciate you clarifying that, because I do recall...
Yeah, that is not something else, then, that would be waiting out there for you. Now, what does happen in that case is, when twenty nineteen hits here, you need to be ready to say, it needs to be renewed in order to keep this level of investment in the streets, or we need to do something, something else at that point.
Any other questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Franz.
You got me now.
I know, I know. Any public comment on this matter?
Do we have to reopen the public meeting? Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, I think, look towards the city legal council. I believe the mayor can gavel in essence formally to say, open the public hearing on the budget.
That's correct.
To hold the public hearing? Okay. Now we'll hold the public hearing?
I'm so athwart of you.
All right, are you...
I'm nervous.
You should be.
Dennis from the Salina Chamber of Commerce. Rod's comments, I just want to expand upon a point here for a second. The other day, I was standing at checkout line at a local store, and I observed a teenager in front of me who had on a T-shirt as related to a club or activity at the high school that the student attends, and on the back were names of various businesses that had provided, obviously, some measure of support, a little bit of support, presumably fifty, a hundred dollars to help pay for the T-shirts and to help ultimately pay for some activity associated with their club, band uniforms or something, or trip or something. And I noticed that none of what I was looking at involved a dot com. My point is, to those in the community, is that it's the local businesses that support the community that makes Salina a good place to live. You heard Jason talk about sales tax rates and what the trends have been in this community, up a little bit in Manhattan so far in two thousand thirteen. They're down versus where they were in two thousand twelve. And that's the situation in other communities across state. So, put our numbers in context, we're certainly better off to be basically flat a little ahead compared to other communities. And that really starts with people, and we know that our pull factors continue to grow, but we know that there's, and we're doing better compared to other communities, but there's a tremendous amount of money that is just being used to buy stuff online. And when people buy stuff online, say, I don't have to pay a sales tax, that comes back in the form of, therefore, we have to raise property taxes. Just want to make that point, that there is an aspect of buying things online. Takes money out of the community, takes jobs away from neighbors and friends and teenagers that are working in the community, and it comes back to bite everybody ultimately with putting pressure on property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this matter?
Good afternoon. Stephen Howe, twenty-two oh-two Melrose Lane here in Salina. Also a business owner, co-owner of the Tammer House School of Dance at one twenty-four South Santa Fe in downtown Salina.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the business? I didn't get all of that. What was the business name?
It's the Tammer House School of Dance. It's located one twenty-four South Santa Fe in downtown Salina. As you know, I've been working on a online petition, and don't really have too many more signatures than I did at the previous commission meeting, but it was just over a hundred and fifty, and we're citizens in Salina that would just oppose any tax increase or property tax increase in the mill levy. And I started this petition because I visited with a lot of people in the community, friends that I know. I've still had friends in recent weeks that have been furloughed here in Salina. And so I know things are still pretty tough out there. People are still trying to get by, and I do know the burden always gets put back on the consumer, or the property owner. If you're a landlord and you rent out apartments or homes to people, you often pass that on to who's renting. So it obviously gets passed down to somebody to foot the bill. And I would like to urge the Salina City Commission to maintain the current mill levy. I'm not even asking you to reduce. I'm just asking you to maintain the current mill levy and choose that option today. So, I do know, just in commenting on what Dennis had mentioned about the online purchases and how that affects local businesses, and that certainly has an impact. Nationally, there's an effort to create a national online sales tax. But it's kind of ironic, because some of the people that do support that are Walmart, who has, I shouldn't say they've put out a lot of Main Street businesses out of business with being able to offer lower prices, but I just think that's kind of ironic that they're, you know, out there promoting and lobbying for this online sales tax. But yet, at the same time, history has shown that they've put a lot of Main Street businesses out of business, too. So, just wanted to add that to the context. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few quick comments for you, too, and you don't need to stand, unless you, I mean, if you want to respond, there's nothing really directly. I appreciate you coming out. The online thing, you know, I'm an online business owner, and I hear all the time about, oh, sales tax, on and on. I would encourage Dennis at the Chamber of Commerce to, it's been profitable for me. I live in a much bigger house, I did, than before I was online. And so, I would encourage the chamber to go out and get our businesses involved in a lot more online presence, and bring those dollars back to Salina. The sales tax is one issue, but the thing you're talking about, they're looking at a minimum of like, I think, fifty employees or something like that, and over ten million dollars a year in sales minimum, before they even start that sales tax. I think they're going to have a real problem with the Tenth Amendment. I think they're going to, to try and bring that in nationwide, that's going to be a difficult thing. But I, while that does have some effect on local tax revenues, it sure can bring a lot of money into the community as well. And like I said, I would encourage the chamber to get involved with getting a lot of our businesses that maybe aren't online, online, and I'm a dot com, and I may not have been on the shirt he's seen, but I donate thirty-six hundred dollars at least a year to local charities, or the Steeple Theater, or soccer teams, or whatever else. So we do donate locally as well. A couple of things you mentioned, too, about the mill levy increase. Now, I know you're aware, because we've discussed, we're looking at roads and our fund balance, trying to get that up there. And you mentioned your friends who'd been furloughed, and it's expensive. I look at my property taxes every year, and I think, how can it be this, you know, I mean, I'm the same, I'm just like everybody else, and I have rental properties, too, and we don't pass that down. We may have to eventually, but we pretty well stabilize our rates for rent, and that's that, they rent for what they'll bring. But the one thing is, is you mentioned your friends, maybe who may be falling on hard times. Well, I think the last thing they want to do is drive into a huge pothole and have an expense on their car that they definitely couldn't afford to pay for. And so that's kind of where we're going. You know, if we were going out and buying, maybe taking some unnecessary risks on some things, it would be easier. But I really think that we're looking at trying to really do our infrastructure, maybe some things that have been neglected. And again, I think getting the better credit ratings, hopefully, can keep our interest rates low, and in the long term, make our taxes a little more affordable for what we're getting for our money for these people. So, you know, again, I read some of the names on there, and I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, it's fantastic. But a lot of people are still complaining about, you know, public art and stuff, and you know, that's something that was decided five years ago. And I'm not saying that this commission is against public art, but they keep bringing that up as a shining example of how we're wasting their money. And, you know, we've, I think this commission, well, two of them are relatively new and haven't had a chance to do too many of the capital improvement projects, but we're really trying to, I think, get to the core of things, you know, rebuilding a bicentennial center that had been, you know, woefully inadequately used, and really bringing that around and replacing some lights that were getting really old downtown with a really efficient system that I think in the end, you know, maybe with some of the new costs increased on it, it may not ever pay for itself, but it'll be a pretty good return on our investment. So I think we've been pretty responsible with how we spend our money. And again, I don't want to increase taxes, but I do want good roads, and people like good roads, and I do want our infrastructure to be the best that it can be. And I really think that we're going after that, and, you know, I encourage you to keep forwarding me any information that you have on ways that you think we can save money. If we're being irresponsible, let us know, but we're really, I think, trying to be as good a stewards with the tax dollars as we can. So I hope maybe that helps. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I had one question. If there's any information that the public could see as far as correspondence, when there was the downgrade to the outlook for the bonds, was there any directive or guidance that was given to the city as far as you need to maintain a certain reserve fund threshold or anything like that, or is it kind of vague? Is it specific?
I think I would defer maybe either to the city manager or Mr. Franz, but my understanding is they don't generally come in and specifically tell you, hey, here's what we did, but they can kind of give, they may have given some indication that we'd like to steal a little bit better fund balance from them, so...
Yeah, the, what they said was, is that, and you're right, they don't say you have to be here, you have to be there. They say that's not really our role, and, which is interesting, because I asked the exact same question of Mr. Franz, and he told me that. But what they did kind of say is, is that the five million isn't enough, which I found to be interesting, because we had a much lower target for many, many years, and it wasn't a concern. And I think that illustrates the pessimism with the municipal market altogether in the economy.
I think the exact terminology they used was, they said that your fund balance target is more in line with a double-A three rating than a double-A two. That is the way they expressed it. So, whatever that might really mean, you know, so, and in answer to Mr. Howe's questions, yes, we do have an opinion for Moody's. I'd be glad to...
To forward to him, yeah.
To share with you if you'd like, so...
And again, I think it's great what you're doing, Mr. Howe. I mean, I think it's important that the public get involved. I'm glad, I've mentioned before, I'm glad you come to the meetings. I've complained since day one that I want the public to be more involved, and, you know, we definitely appreciate your input on anything we can do to improve, so...
I'm Judy Larson, seven fifteen North Nine. And, two things. First of all, my father, I grew up in Linsburg, and my father was a businessman, so I'm very much attuned to the struggles that the business community goes through. This was before the time of internet or anything like that, but still, I know what it took for my father to maintain his business, so I'm very much business-focused, if at all possible. However, I'm a cat person. Yvonne will tell you, I am a cat person. And there are things, there's a, there's a cat litter box, bags, that I get from my cat, because it's a more sanitary way of disposing of things. If I go, I went to the local pet store, and they're eleven dollars. Online, they're five. And I'm on disability income, so I really, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for me to spend eleven dollars when I can spend five. So, whenever possible, I obviously go and shop locally, but sometimes I just can't. Secondly, I spent most of my adult life, I just came back six years ago, in New Jersey, and I still check Jersey papers almost every day. The mayor of Little Egg Harbor Township in New Jersey has to sell his house because he can't afford the property taxes. They're thirty-six thousand dollars.
We're not there yet.
And I'm just laughing. I'm just laughing. You know, Salina is fine, you know, and I understand you're working under the best conditions that you can make, but, yeah, thirty-six thousand dollars, and the mayor's having to sell his house. I just thought you might get a ticket out of that.
I wonder why he'd have to sell if he got thirty-six hundred dollars a year.
Thirty-six thousand.
No, I'm saying that's our pay, though, thirty-six hundred. Yeah, I wonder if he's really selling it.
Yeah, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing that we are working on that goes along with, there's a bigger picture to this thing that we're working on, and we talk about budget, and we say, how can we save money? One promise Salina has, and I won't delve into it, you can see future meetings for it, is our population density. You know, you look at places like Longmont, Colorado, which is a similar-sized town, or some of the others, and their property tax is half as much. Well, they've got a density of four thousand people per square mile. Salina has a population density of eighteen hundred per square mile, and that right there can tell you that's about half the people, it takes half as many people to pay for their infrastructure as ours. So, that's only one small part of the bigger picture, but there are things that we're looking at as a commission, in the long term, for our view of how the city should be, and the growth patterns, and what things should be in the reuse areas, to try and lower your taxes through just smarter growth, and that's, make our town more sustainable. Take that, state politics. Yeah, so we're really working on it, so... You're not supposed to use that word, sustainable. I just, that's why I thought of using it in a public meeting, so...
I'd like to thank Judy and Steve for your engagement, being engaged in your community. Also, everybody else that's here, whether you speak or not, being here is important. And I know a lot of people watch at home, because I get a lot of phone calls, and I've got a number of phone calls, about people that wanted to give input. So, I'd like to thank the people that called me and expressed their concerns and their support, and whichever those were, I appreciated hearing from everybody. Just to, Mr. Howe, on your, a couple of things that I think are important, and you spoke about having friends that were recently furloughed, and one of the things that I think the city manager addressed is that during a lot of this downturn, in the recession, a lot of cities went towards cutting their staff and cutting employees, and I think it was a bit of a struggle, and we didn't do it, and I think that we're really, we really benefit from not taking that, from taking that road. So, there are certain things that we add, that we have to say that we value, and one of them is the human capital and the investments that we've made in employees, and the institutional knowledge that they have in the jobs that they're doing. And we really value that investment, and I think as a community, that shared, and so that's one of the things that, even though sometimes we have friends that are furloughed and all that, we know the pain in that, it's why we want to take steps that we can take to minimize that as much as possible. The other, the other thing that you had mentioned is that, you know, when we worry about passing what we pass down to our children and so on, and I think on a national level, we get kind of caught up in the conversation of the mountain of debt that the federal government has taken on, and do you want to pass that along to your kids? I think we're quite a bit more responsible on the local level, and we just don't have the latitude to go crazy. And I think one of the things that we certainly can do for our future generations is that we don't leave them with roads that are going to cost so much, and infrastructure, so much to repair if we don't take care of them now. There's a declining curve on the quality of our roads and infrastructure, and if we're responsible now, and we maintain upkeep on those, we're not going to straddle our future generations with enormous bills to fix crumbling infrastructure. And then the third, or the fourth thing is, is that I just want to mention on that, is that, you know, a lot of communities that are overly obsessed with keeping their mill levies and their taxes low, a lot of those don't really have the value of their public services like we do here. We have really good quality public services. I know that everybody appreciates that has children, the parks and recreation, we have a great parks and recreation, and other departments. We had a great tour of the sanitation, the wastewater treatment facility and the water treatment facility. They are top, first-class, top-notch, and they affect everybody. And Public Works and our roads and streets are a big part of that. So, we have really high-quality public service. We're kind of spoiled, and we really want to maintain those as best we can so that we pass these really high-quality institutions along to our children. So, that's kind of where I come from on looking kind of in the future, and as a planner, that's kind of the only thing I know how to do. And so when I see that, and I see what we're able to do by taking small incremental steps that are a little bit painful, but that in the long term are we going to benefit from, I think it's our responsibility to do those things when the times call for it. So, it's kind of where I am. And then one last word on this local versus internet stuff. Just one thing that I would say, whether it's, you know, say... one thing that I would say, whether it's, you know, sales tax is a small component of that, but there are numerous economic studies out there that show that national retailers and national chains and all that will generally only return about $15 to $20 per hundred to the local community and the local economy, whereas a local business will return anywhere from $40 to $45 to $60 per hundred to the local community. And that involves taxes and wages and the use of local products and everything else. So, that's, there are a lot of components that go into that. And so, when you start thinking shopping local, think about that. There are a lot of components, $15 versus $45 that stay in the community. So, I would just add that as well.
I just wanted to add one thing to what Commissioner Blanchard mentioned about not furloughing employees, but during the time since 2009, the staff has been reduced by almost 10%. I think mostly because of attrition, perhaps, but, so, it's not like we haven't gone through the belt tightening period ourselves.
Right.
Gary Swartzen, number 528, South College. Can't resist reissuing the reminder of the chain of command from the federal government. We have the cut cap and burners, cut cap and balancers who are balancing the federal budgets on the state's back. And the state, obviously, as Mr. Franz explained nicely, and you all understand, but just a reminder to the rest of us, that we have 191,000 of the biggest, best businesses in the state of Kansas that pay a zero, that would be in zero taxes, income taxes. So, obviously, the local yokels get to bear some of the burden. And thanks to Mr. Franz and you all for pointing that out. We even got to hear a little argument between one of our state representatives and one of our county commissioners, which demonstrates the reality of that. So, considering all that, I think you all are doing well. Eight years, no hike. I think I know how you vote and I'm with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion. What is that?
What is?
I don't know.
I don't know about a motion myself. I do know my thought. My thought was that I was interested in recuperating the exemption loss. And I was, of course, with the, in decreasing that by the savings of the Health Department and then adding a mill for street repair, whatever that comes out to.
Is that option four?
Yeah. Option four may be the best description of that.
I was trying to, I didn't know if that was an option or not. I just, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, they're all.
With commissioners, to help you with the math a little bit, not taking into consideration the sales tax, a mill is about $400,000. Keep that in mind. So, a couple of mills would be about $800,000. Now, the sales tax has an impact and that's why you can see from option one, you lose up to almost 191,000 estimated in that sales tax at county, our portion of the countywide sales tax by being there. As you increase and in essence reduce that gap in the property tax, you see, for example, in option two, there's a little bit less difference. You would think that leaving it the same would roughly be the $600, almost $19,000 that you were going to, you know, that's the difference in the Health Department, but it isn't. It's only $505,000. That would be the impact of the sales tax. So, you can see, though, as you go from option one, two, three, and four, that sales tax impact is less and less and less because your gap between the city property tax level and the county property tax level becomes slightly less and less and less. So, I think that's why, one way to think about it might be, what number do you want to be at? For example, if you said, I'd like to have 400,000 benefit to general fund balance and 400,000 benefit streets, it's a total of 800,000. We can figure that out for you or whatever that number might be and wherever you'd want to allocate it.
And again, for me, Mr. Franz, was the idea that we would use this mill increase direct, this direct, say for instance, option four, this 953 for roads, then we would then feed the fund balance off the special sales tax or no? We're wanting to steer away all from that?
As this is structured, the way I have it structured in the revised publication and the stuff I have put together is that the sales tax supplementation to the general debt service funds disappear as a result of the mill levy. And those sales taxes get reallocated then to street improvements.
Okay, so that's where it's coming.
And so, it really, it's kind of like Mr. Gage said, if you can decide how much, then we can make it happen and we'll get it allocated so that it turns out that way. You do have a sheet in your packet that kind of shows some of the detail of.
Would we see our reserve fund going, go up a little under option four?
You would. And as a matter of fact, whatever you decide to do, if you tell us to put 250,000 to the reserve fund and a balance in the streets, that's what we would do. So, you really need to decide how to allocate that.
That would put us over that 3 million?
250 would put us over the 3 million, yes. Very close there, too.
I'll just kind of add, as Commissioner Hardy did, kind of my thought processes on this. When we voted to republish that number at the two, a half to a two-mill increase, one of the thoughts that I had at that time was that, and as we know, at that time, the Health Department was still a part of that formula. And I had thought, and my math at that time was one mill to streets, one mill to stabilize the, or to help build, rebuild that general fund. Well, when you take the 1.5 roughly out of the Health Department formula, I came up with 0.472 as the balance of that. Now, that's a little bit less with that, less than two mills with the equalization of the county. But my thought would be that if we were maintaining the Health Department, I would still think that the two, we'd be looking at the 28-point whatever, but since we backed that down, I'm still looking at the two, but I'm looking at it reconfigured in a different way. And so, my thought was, and just doing the rough math, is that I'd still like a full mill to go, the 404,000 to streets and roughly 324,460 to help rebuild the general fund, just thinking that, you know what, if we do start to come do a little bit better, we're probably not going to. But if we did, we could start to, you know, if the sales taxes pick up and some other things start to tick up a little bit, we could do better that way. But it doesn't give, you know, that 1.5 didn't completely go away for 85% of the people that are in the county that are city residents, 100% of them. You know, they're paying on the other end. So, I kind of want to be a little sensitive towards that and know that, I don't want to ask more than a full two that we had originally talked about. So, that's kind of what my math did. And if anybody's interested, that mill came to 26.662, which is an increase of, over the last year's budget, mill levy of 0.472.
So, that's a .5 increase.
I like to.
So, that would be option three?
Option three.
It would be, it would be an option three, but with just a, yeah. I'd be favorable to rounding it up, I suppose, if that's what it is.
Which would be option four.
Well, no, 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 I mean, to the half.
He's a sub-three.
Rounding it up to the half, to the half mill. But that's sort of my thought, is that to kind of keep it at that two and consistent with what our conversation has been.
Excuse me. We, in the option threes and fours, we gave you a half a mill increment. If there was a three-quarters of a mill increment, you'd make up another, you'd add about 100 and probably 15,000, maybe 120,000 to the 729,000 number that's in option three. So, I'd give you about 840 to 850,000, just a little over the equivalent of two mills.
Kind of a little bit of sales tax from that as well, not much.
Yeah, yeah, there's a little bit in there. Kind of the half, obviously about half the difference between option three and option four. That gives you the equivalent of what two, a little bit more than what two mills pure property tax would otherwise bring in. So, that, you may decide that you might want to go between option three and four and just say .75 mills, which is 26.94 mills.
I'd like, yeah, I'd really like to build that fund balance up a little bit faster. I think we're going to be seeing an increase in interest rates coming up. I don't know how long it takes us as a general rule to dial that back and what it's going to take for the, you know, I'd like a real good showing with these ratings companies to come along and say, hey, those guys have really taken it up. We're going to raise the ratings. That way, if interest rates start climbing up again, you know, we're on the better side of them. I mean, that's just me. I mean, as I get older, I get, I guess, more responsible. There was a time I would have said, spend it all, let's have a big party. But now, I'm just kind of more in that, I'd really like to see us build that up a little bit faster. So, I would be inclined to commit political suicide and go with a higher number and.
Well, the 0.75 will get us, will get us the ability to give approximately 404 to roads and about, whatever the balance is, 420?
Yeah, if you added .75 and you said, let's set the mill levy to 26.94 mills, you could then say, we'd like X dollars for streets and the rest would go for.
Did you say 26.49?
94.
94.
Yeah, that's the difference between option three and, the middle between option three and option four. It's three-fourths of a mill. We just show a half and a full, so it gives you.
What would that, what would, what would the 40, one mill, I want to do one mill to streets. What would the balance put our, roughly put our general fund balance at at the end of 2014?
Well, all things being equal to what we're budgeting, there's some things we don't know. If you, if that, in option three, it shows $730,000. With three-quarters of a mill, I think that would be pretty close to about $840,000. So, if you had 400 to streets, you'd have about 430 to the general fund balance, give or take.
And that was with a three-fourths of a mill?
With a three-fourth of a mill.
Right.
That would put it at about 3.2 million.
Right off the bat.
About 3.2 million.
If we continue that trend, we're at 4 million within a couple of years. I mean, two, three years.
Yeah, you've got other challenges, but the hope is, is that the economy locally slowly comes around and, you know, I really hope that we're not facing this next year with these changes. I don't, two years in a row would be a difficult decision. I wouldn't expect you to be put in that position.
Yeah, that was one thing that was making me a little nervous, is if we're making that decision today, I would hope that the economy would continue to improve, although slowly, so that this time next year, we can look at the budget a little differently, perhaps. And be mindful that we raised a mill levy, that at that point, there's also the possibility we could bring it back down.
Sure.
Yeah, and one other factor, commissioners, and again, it's a slow factor right now, but as we really get into the continuous process improvement, the application of the lean techniques, we're getting, starting to get beyond some of the training and into the real projects. So, you should see some offsetting costs, at least demonstrated through the process review even this year, and then by the end of next year, hopefully there'll be more. Now, there's still how you time that back into your budget. There's, that's the second challenge to that. But it's a slow incremental thing, but the whole objective is to do, be more efficient with the voice of the customer in our ear in time and reduce the cost it takes to provide quality services. And it's a long-term approach that no one else, to my knowledge in Kansas, is truly taking. So, my hope is, is that you do start to see dividends in time incrementally, help take some of that pressure off.
And I think we got some potentially good news from Ms. Tasker at the Water Department. The state may be looking at some of our wastewater issues and we may be able to shift some of that money over to some other areas. And we're talking some significant, maybe some, I don't think the money's going to come back into us. They've definitely got other uses for it. But I think that, I don't know if you'd, I don't remember the exact details of it. Something to do with the wastewater requirements and the state may be looking at those a little different, which potentially.
Well, yeah, and that'll be an impact on your fees, which again, if you're at home, that feels like a tax, too.
That's right.
Absolutely.
So, what would kind of be the process on this, Mr. Binkston? Do we need to arrive at our rate first or do we need to start the process prior to that?
It's my understanding from Mr. Franz and Mr. Gage that that is probably the first step. Am I correct? Just by motion to get that mill levy established and then the process would follow normal procedures.
Yeah, once you, you'd make a motion and consider that to tell us what you want to do. And then you could go ahead and pass the ordinances, which would then put that into effect.
Do we need to make motion in that of what our intentions are for those funds?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That would be best.
I would be comfortable with the .75, I think.
Point seven-five is fine.
Yeah, I would be, too.
With that 400, was it 404 going to streets?
Roads and.
Do we want to cap that funding to the fund balance at, say, 400,000 and take any remaining? And is that the sort of plan or do you want to set the remaining to go to the fund balance?
The remaining to go to the fund balance.
Probably, I'm going to look at Mr. Franz, but it's probably easier for us if you set that rate and then you allocate the dollars that you want towards streets and the remaining towards fund balance, just because you're still going to have a valuation.
That's right. Things are going to change. Okay, okay.
Yeah, the mill levy rate always changes in November anyway. So, what we need to know is if you set.
Streets.
X amount of dollars for streets or X amount for fund balance, doesn't matter. And then the balance goes to the other.
With three-quarter increase, could you give us that number, that total number, that 800?
Well, I can give you the actual mill rate, which is 26.94. The estimated impact of the, of a three-quarter of a mill is, puts you at about an 800, I'm going to say 840,000 dollar number, just a little over what two pure mills would be without a sales tax impact.
Well, I would.
So, that would be at 26.94?
26.94.
Equals three-quarters of a mill.
And I would, I don't know who had mentioned it, but I would, I'm comfortable with putting a little bit more of that towards streets because it's a, it's a direct, you know, directly going towards something. And maybe, so maybe if we did the, if it's 840, then maybe if we could say 440 to streets and then whatever the.
That was my thought.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
It's just generally around that 400,000. And we know that'll vary, but while it's a smart move to build that fund balance, it's not real exciting to the consumer, I guess. That paved road in front of their house is a little more exciting.
Well, it also is, gives that fund the opportunity that we're having a better year than we think. Those are, that the 440 is going into the streets right now. So, and we can continue to build on that reserve.
All right, so entertain a motion?
I would move that we set the mill levy at 26.94 mills and with $440,000 of that increase to go towards street repair for 2014.
Second. The motion and a second, and since this is a second reading, can I get a roll call, please? Is that correct?
If I may, because I would understand, we were strictly dealing with the number by motion so that it would then translate into your consideration here in a moment of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
If I understood, again, Mr. Franz's preference.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, you're still at the motion stage to set the rate.
Sure.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to increase the mill levy by three-fourths, which would be 20. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to increase the mill levy by three-fourths, which would be twenty-six point nine four, with four hundred and forty thousand of it allocating towards road repair. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five to zero. All right.
And now?
And now? Then we need to move on to, go ahead and do second reading, or do I move on to thirteen dash one oh seven oh nine?
I believe you will want to then consider the ordinance thirteen one oh seven oh eight on second reading now that the mill levy would.
Had been set.
Had been set, yes.
So go ahead and do the roll call now for the second reading?
That would be fine, yes.
We don't, no need for a motion on that at all?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Well, no, you'd need the normal process for second reading.
Commissioners, you can treat that like you would a typical ordinance.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about filling it in. Your action just did, so it's just simply the typical approval process for that ordinance.
We just need a motion to pass ordinance number thirteen dash one oh seven oh eight on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pass thirteen dash one oh seven oh eight on second reading. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
I move that we adopt ordinance number thirteen dash one oh seven oh nine declaring the necessity for a tax increase.
Second.
Now, would I do that the same way and then do the exact same? Okay. Have a motion and a second on thirteen dash one oh seven oh nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry, was that, was that a roll call again?
It is a second reading.
It is a second reading, yeah.
Oh, was that?
Yeah.
Well, you know how I'm voting.
You better call it out just to be safe, so they know who to behead.
So this one is a roll call?
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you said exactly the same as the one we just did. All right, so have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Started and looks up here. A lot of paperwork, so you get a little lost in your thoughts. And then we need to adopt resolution thirteen dash seven zero three three, just a regular, I vote on that, yeah?
Yes.
I would move that we adopt then resolution number thirteen dash seven zero three three, establishing various fees for services in a comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina.
Second.
Would that be as revised, or?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, as revised, sorry.
And second.
Have a motion and a second on thirteen dash seven zero three three, as revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero. I think we got all that. If we can take a five-minute break before moving on. All those in favor of five-minute break?
I think you just called it on your own.
Let's get to that real fast.
It's your one dictatorial, you know.
For many weeks, no arrest was.
All right, everybody, we have had a five-minute break and a little bit of a spill and cleanup, and I think we're good to go back into session. We'll go along to five point two.
Item five point two, appeal hearing on the denial of an application by Roy Palmer to be included on the city of Salina vehicle towing rotation list.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. About two years ago, the city commission established a rotation list for towing for the police department. And quickly kind of talk about the context of that. Basically, what happens is unfortunately, we have accidents in our community and they occur on the streets right of way. And the police department's called to respond to that accident, investigate it, do a report, make sure that the vehicles get taken care of if they're not drivable and so forth. And we felt that a couple of years ago, that the best thing to do is have a policy that ensures that you have the service, fair price, and a proper place to store the vehicle. The other issue is occasionally there'd be vehicles that are involved in some way, in some criminal activity. We need to have the ability to have those impounded, make sure it's safe and secure and so forth. So as a result, that, that process was created. Went through the initial round of that with the criteria, performance criterias put together by the police department. And one of the applications was by Palmer, trucking, Mr. Roy Palmer. And his was recently declined primarily, well, it was due to the background check. Part of the process is to do criminal background check. And what, we have the information in front of you. We, we did not provide that early just simply because of the quizzar judicial aspect of this, otherwise we would. So if you need time to look at that, please feel free to take whatever time you need. But that'll illustrate some convictions related recently. And when we look at our ordinance, the ordinance is very specific about certain aspects that we take into consideration when we approve or deny a request to be on the towing. And coming back to the application of the towing, today, if we have an accident under this, the first thing that we would ask of someone is, do you have a towing company you want to use? If they say, yeah, I would like to use, you know, whatever towing company, then we call them, no questions asked. That's the process that we use. But if they, and many times people, they don't know the towing companies if they haven't used them in the past. So they'll say, it doesn't matter to me, and really, they don't want to fool with their minds on other things. If they don't know one, they say it's up to you. That's what the rotation list does. It does not interfere in any way if someone chooses their own towing company. It's only if they leave that to us. And it provides a fair rotational aspect to that. So when we, when we look at this particular situation, we go back to Salina code sections in thirty-eight dash fifty-seven, A two and three. And I'll take a, kind of take you through real quick specifically what we're talking about there. The, the primary aspect of that is the sound business practices in providing towing and storing, storage services and previous conduct and performance related to that. But the real aspect, you can look at both of those. The issues are, the convictions are specifically and directly related to the towing function and service. Now, they don't have to be. They could be related to some other aspect and you say, well, there's a question about, it could be anything. It could be, you know, integrity or whatever it might be. In this case, they are related to those items and they're specifically related to the towing function. So quite honestly, when we looked at it, basic, based on that information, and that's all I have. I'm not familiar with any of the towing companies directly, and so I'm looking simply at the convictions that are in front of us and feel like that was reason to deny that. Now, in accordance with your ordinance, the applicant has the ability to appeal to you. The ordinance language isn't very clear on that. It wasn't, we need to go back and correct it. It deals with appeals more related to suspensions or revocations. But the legal fact of the matter is, is that the city commission, even on applications, has the full discretion and authority. And so that comes back to you and certainly you have the opportunity, if you should choose to either sustain or to overrule that determination, and staff, we recognize that role. And so that's why this is brought to you. Mr. Palmer requested the appeal, so we scheduled it and wanted to bring that to you. Mr. Palmer's here, and so I'm, I'm sure that he would probably like to provide information to you. That's all I have on the matter at this time, and so I would provide that, give it back over to you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask those. And again, I'm sure Mr. Palmer would like the opportunity to address you.
So at this time, I can go ahead and open up the public hearing? Or have him address us first?
This, I don't think there's a formal.
It's not really, not really a public hearing as such, more just a hearing anticipating that.
I'm just, just following this. It says, open up to public. Yeah.
It's a hearing in that.
In front of the public.
Yeah, in front of the public.
I've got a, I've got a quick question for Steph, and that is, is that, you mentioned that it's, it's part of the rotation. Now, if, if someone were to request, being, being in a, some sort of necess, accident or whatever necessitated a tow, they would still be able to request, I mean, he.
Right, we wouldn't, if they know who they want to use.
They would call him on his behalf and.
Correct. If they said, I'd like to use Palmer, Mr. Palmer to come tow my vehicle, then we don't apply the rotation whatsoever. We simply call the provider.
Sure.
Okay. Is that also, is that, is the rotation, does that involve parking violations and other things such as that, or is it just police department type?
Well, it's, it's any situation, usually it'd be accidents. It'd be any situation in which the vehicle could not be physically removed typically. I suppose there could be a situation in which maybe, say, for, I don't know if a DUI would come into play in that or not. I'd have to kind of refer to our police department on a protocol they use where there's not a physical issue with the vehicle itself, where it's more of a, having someone who can actually drive it away and get it off the premises.
Okay, and, and these are not toes that would be, these are toes where the driver is present? Or are there a lot of them where the vehicle's being impounded for other reasons that involve the police department?
It's, it's actually both. If there's an accident, it'll depend on the severity of the accident as to whether the driver can actually make a decision or passenger can make the decision. Whenever that's possible, obviously, and they know who they want to use, then they get to choose. If they don't know or they're not able to do that, or no one related to them can be brought to the scene quickly who could make that decision, you go into the rotation. If it's an impoundment situation, that's just simply one in which the police would say, we need to have the vehicle. There's evidence associated with the crime in the vehicle, or it maybe is the vehicle. It's, it's hard to tell. And in that case, that would be an order of the police department to take that back, that vehicle back as evidence and secure it.
So in, in some situations, then, it could be concerns about the chain, the chain of custody or on evidence that.
That's one of the reasons why the standard is put in place, is so that whether it's a private situation or whether it's an impoundment situation, we're sure of a few things. One is the handling practices. Another is the security of the, of the vehicle, ability to get the contents, you know, how they handle issues with payment and so forth and so on. Because if you have your car in a, in an impounding lot for some period of time, there's a pretty significant cost if it's multiple days. It adds up pretty fast. And so the service standards deal with the processes used and all that to make sure it's fair and that the people that are involved are aware of the, of the terms and so forth.
And so that, I, I assume that there's some bonding issues associated with this as well?
As far as being selected, I, I need to look back in. I don't know if we had them bond or not. I'd have to look at the ordinance.
I don't recall that being part of the issue, but I think we were, that may be, but I don't recall that being a big. I think we were more about, you know, secure storage and making sure people had access to prescription medication or things like that that were.
Do you know how many companies are on this list?
I believe we have two currently. Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct.
Is there ever an issue with finding someone that's able to perform the tow if required?
I, I think initially, when we went through the process, there were concerns about whether they would be able to bring the operation or the impoundment yard up to our standards. Two clearly have been able to do that. So I think at the time, there was possibly four towing companies that were most, that did most of the business in town. So two of those are currently in that rotation.
Is your question more of a, have we had any problems with getting trucks out there in a timely manner?
Right.
Is that?
Related to those that.
Correct.
Again, I'd have to defer that question, ask Carson to come on up. That's probably one that he deals with more than I'm not aware of. Our deputy police chief, Carson Mansfield, can answer that question as to whether or not we have trouble with, through the rotation, getting a response.
Since we started this, and I've got the times back there, I have not received any complaints until last, this month. And this month, on the sixteenth, Roy emailed me and said that he has complaints with not being timely. And he had a customer who said that they asked for a tow from him and got the, the rotation instead. I asked him on that date to please send me some specifics. I look into it because that's what I'm supposed to do. I have not received anything to date. I did get a call then from the other company. And he said that he had heard that this person, another person asked and didn't get to use him. That came on the heels of him not notifying us about something else. I don't want to get into a whole deal about it. But I asked him to give me some specifics and I have to date and I've received those either. If I get specifics, we'll certainly look into it. I told him we would handle it as a formal complaint. We're looking into it.
Sure, but you, that, that the response time has been adequate. There hasn't been a shortage of.
I have received no complaints from officers or from the public.
How long have we been working with this revised system?
Yeah, he's got the data. I think it's about a year, about a year or so. I was thinking that's about right.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the ordinance was approved, the, the formality of the process was put together and finalized. And then they went through that selection process and then put together the contracts after you awarded, in essence, I say awarded, after the, the two were selected and then the contracts were put into place, agreements.
Twenty twelve, we inspected them. In September of twelve, we made our choices and it's gone from there.
Still behind you.
In answer to your other question, I think off the top of my head, there's no bond, but there is insurance requirements.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
So, Mr. Gage, you were kind of looking, you were starting to point out, maybe I didn't catch all of them. You were saying your reason for denial was sections A two, was that the main one? Or was there some more under there that you felt also?
Yeah, A two and A three kind of work together. The, the count, the journal entry from the district courts included in your information, and that has four counts. Yeah, let me go a little bit further here.
It's pretty vague. I mean, it's, I understand what it is, but I, I wish there was something maybe a little more like we knew as it related to this.
Yeah, we have a couple deceptive commercial practices and then transfers, certificates of title and lawful acts. So you have basically those repeated, each of those repeated. And so those are related directly to the, to the towing operation. Again, they wouldn't have to be. Someone in order could do something that's not related to the operation that you feel is, makes them questionable to be involved. But in this case, it is directly related.
Related, yeah. Maybe the attorney could, I mean, it's just transfer certificates of titles, unlawful acts. I guess I just, I mean, I'm just, maybe just a clarification for maybe what, what that exactly is, maybe.
Yeah, and maybe along with that, are we looking at section thirty-five dash fifty-seven, A two?
Yes.
Okay, and that is technical skill experience and sound business practices in providing towing and storage services. Is that kind of a, is it narrow and specific, or is it?
It's about the sound business practices aspect.
So what, just for me, maybe what that might entail, I mean, what an example of transfer certificates of title and lawful acts. I don't know.
The details of those, I am unaware of any more of the details than what you see from that journal entry personally. I don't know the extent to which Mr. Palmer may have expounded upon those in his discussion with Mr. Gage, and he may be the one that would prefer to provide further information.
I just didn't know generally what that even meant. I mean, I assume it's a title of a vehicle, but, I mean, no.
There we go. Maybe.
Maybe.
Commissioners, if, if you'd like to learn more about the detail of that, it's going to take Mr. Binkston a few minutes to actually read into that. It, it all depends on where you want to be in this. The issue really with these is that, for example, deceptive commercial practice.
Sure.
Being deceived or someone expects based on possibly what they read or what's advertised, something, and they get something else. And then the, the transfer certificates of titles would be titles to.
Vehicles.
Vehicles.
Right.
I'm not sure what the actual specific circumstances there. Mr. Palmer could, could provide you with more detail if that's important to you. The, the key thinking that I had in this is those, first of all, you have convictions.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah. And mine wasn't really necessarily about the details, just more so about, you know, kind of confirming that this was vehicle oriented and things. kind of confirming that this was vehicle oriented and things that had to do with the business practice.
Right.
And that was more the thought, I mean, I don't need the dotted i's and all that.
Do you have any other questions for staff or for attorney?
Unless...
Unless you have something to add?
I don't know that we...
These, the violations would appear to me, the convictions would appear to me to fall squarely in the realm of the business practices of towing vehicles. As I say, I have not heard Mr. Palmer's account, nor have I read the full affidavit.
Sure, sure.
Just looking at the journal entry, it would appear to fall squarely within that aspect of that line of work.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Binkson. Can we go ahead and ask Roy Palmer to come up? Anything he'd like to add?
Good afternoon, my name's Roy Palmer. I'm at 7925 West Pleasant Hill Road. I apologize for my nervousness here. I'd like to say that I represent Palmer Truck and Trailer Repair, as well as Palmer Towing and Recovery, and All American Towing, and they conduct business at 2700 North Fifth Street. I'd like to appeal the city's decision on the motion not to let us be on the rotation due to the fact that we are a reputable business and a community. We've been here for over 20 years. I got quite a few referrals here, if I can bring them up to you, with local businesses here that will substantiate us.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also say that in our business, we go through a process of disposal of vehicles. There's paperwork that you have to go through with the state to dispose of these vehicles. And periodically, you could run into situations that sometimes turn sour, as far as some of your paperwork gets turned into the state. And this is a situation that we feel was taken by the highway patrol during an inspection on some verifications, and we feel that it was just something that they took and ran with as far as legalness of the paperwork.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Palmer?
Can you tell me again, you had mentioned a couple of different towing companies?
For what?
That you, that was, that you owned a couple of different towing companies?
Palmer Truck and Trailer Repair, Palmer Towing and Recovery, and All American Towing.
All American Towing. Now, are these, are these all local, or did you just apply for the rotation with one of those companies?
Yes, just with one. We started off with actually Palmer Truck and Trailer Repair back in 1993, and we built a decent towing business to start with, and we wanted to expand into the small towing business as we grew. And back in 2002, 2003, we ran into a situation with the police and the sheriff's department of constant complaining on towing services not responding quick enough to calls. They were saying hour, hour and a half, two hours for response times for towing services. So, excuse me. So, at that time, we felt there's an opportunity for us to expand our business. And so, when we did that, we went to this police department, and they put us on for the rotation. And at that time, we feel that when we came into the equation with the rotation, that we made the business more competitive between the towing services that were on there, which entailed them to pick up their procedures and their response times and their professionalism in the business also. And we got our times down to 20 to 30 minutes for response times during the day, 20 minutes, 30 minutes at night. And that went fine for eight to 10 years. And then, all of a sudden, we started getting complaints from the police department on the, that the community was complaining about the prices that the towing services were charging on the rotation. And so, that's when they started looking at a rotation list for the city then. And I'd like to say, over all these years that we've been towing for the city, we, to our recollection, have not had complaints for our service, for our pricing, for our timing for the service that we provide, our professionalism. Nothing ever came about until they started to want to put their rotation into practice. And then they started to kind of tear us down as far as our towing services, not just me, all the, the majority of the towing services were on the rotation at that time. And, you know, nobody ever had the complaint, I can't say it for the other towing services, but they never came to us with complaints. The city didn't, the police department didn't, and the sheriff's department didn't. So, we could never have anything to fix if we don't know we had a problem.
What percent of your business would you estimate is from rotation work? Your towing business?
I would say now, zero.
Right.
Correct. Before, I'd say we had probably, well, at the time when we was four services on rotation, we took 25% of what was on rotation. But us personally as a business, I would say that we had 10% maybe is generated off the rotation for us, because we do got such a big clientele base in the private sector that we rely upon. But my biggest thing is, is I feel that with us into the rotation, it keeps the rotation fair, keeps everybody competitive, because they know that when they, they're not doing their job and they're slacking off, we're going to pick it up. We're going to be there to grab it from them. And the rotation does also allow us the opportunity to make contact with customers out there that we would normally not get to associate or communicate with, because our avenues of advertising and the papers and then the telephone books and radio does not hit them customers. We do get one-on-one when we do do the rotation list and get to meet that customer in person, and we solicit our business to them. And from our past, we've got a high percentage of maintaining the business that we do do over a period of time in the future. So, if we get that service out there to that community, the person in the community, we're pretty much guaranteed we will get them back again, and we won't need the rotation for that call then.
Would you say then that what happened with this court case does not fairly represent your company?
I would say that, yes.
And why is this, it looked like there was quite a bit going on, why is that...
Because one, one thing that you do as far as a signature on a form can escalate from one item to 10 items, because the signature incriminated you, and then it escalates to all these other things that they can attach to it.
And would you say that these items directly related to the towing part of your business?
This, these cases, this case here?
Mm-hmm.
It is a part of, it is a part of the equation in our towing business, yes. In the disposal of usually the tow, the cars that we tow or impound, abandoned vehicles, that kind of deal, yes.
Have you corrected that?
Yes.
Commissioners, as a follow-up, if I may, the four charges that they agreed to, the two deceptive commercial practice, and then the two transfer certificates of titles, I believe the record shows were plea bargained from other charges. What were the other, what were the original charges, Mr. Palmer?
I do have a list, I do have it here, but this is my copy only, I can't bring it forward. Oh, maybe you can read them, if that's fine with everybody.
Were they, is that much different than what's on here?
No.
I believe they are. I think it's important for you to understand the context of the original charges as well.
Right.
If Mr. Gage could summarize some of that for us, maybe, or Mr. Binkson?
Well, it's my understanding there were eight counts.
If I may, I think it would be most appropriate if Mr. Palmer addresses the matter and he charges against him.
Okay. Okay, the, let me see here. I mean, it would be easier for me to probably have you read them.
Maybe, I suppose we could pass it down, or you could just read them, read them to us, or...
Real quick.
Okay, well, count one was on March 10th of 2010. They were feloniously and intentionally generate, distribute, draw, or cause made, generate, distribute, or drawn a written instrument to wit, public sale notice dated, on a couple trucks that we auctioned through our auction. Count two was... Feloniously, intentionally make, generate, distribute, draw, or cause to be made, generate or distributed, an instrument to wit, bill of sale on two trucks that was auctioned.
That's the same two trucks?
Correct. A written statement on a receipt of the two trucks falsely stating on such matter of these trucks.
So, were these trucks that were impounded?
Yes.
That you had towed and impounded, and then subsequently...
Correct.
...made these bill of sales and sold them?
Correct.
Okay. Is it, is that, are those four pretty much the same? Are they all pretty much like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Palmer, did you, were there any charges related to perjury?
If there is, I don't, I'm not, I'm not seeing them. I'm not seeing them if they are in there.
Commissioners, the context, is that, Mr. Palmer indicated he felt that with responding to the question, that the charges that he, through his attorney, pled no contest to, did not reflect the business. He's certainly entitled to answer the question, provide his perspective of that. The understanding is, though, is that these are misdemeanor charges, the original charges were felonies, and in essence, his attorney worked with prosecutor to, through a plea bargain arrangement, to actually reduce the charges from some other aspects of this, the perjury is one of them, committing, making false information, or conspiracy to commit and make false information, and making false information. And so, those were, our understanding is, is those were plea bargained down from felonies to misdemeanors.
I mean, I definitely think that it falls into exactly what we were trying to stop by going into this. I mean, the whole concept when we put this forward was to stop, maybe not predatory practices, but what we felt were a, kind of a hodgepodge and a non-standardized practice that people really didn't know what was going to happen when they got their vehicles towed. People were denied, and I'm not saying that any of this is Mr. Palmer's, but just examples of what we were trying to stop. People denied access to their vehicles to get prescription medicine, which, which held, you know, that, and I understand there's certain state laws that maybe weren't being followed locally, things like that. So, the whole concept was, is that we expected this higher standard, and I definitely think that even with these misdemeanors, it falls into, to probably a business practice that we don't want. It's a lower standard of excellence than we would expect from the people on that rotation list. That being said, I'm always the guy who wants redemption for people. I'm not going to say that that's right now, you know, but what would be Mr. Palmer's process in the future? He can reapply, is it an every-year thing? And what would we expect to see to maybe clear this out? I don't know the details of towing business. I mean, I, you know, I don't know that he had these two cars, you know, maybe the person never came, I don't know what the process is, maybe it was a pain in the rear to do state stuff. I mean, I'm not saying it justifies it, but I really don't know the details. I know it's a crime. Obviously, the state felt strong enough about it. And, but, I mean, I'm always, you know, I want to see a guy try and, if the guy can make a change and make himself better, and, you know, in the future, come back to us. What would sort of that process look like? If, you know, like I said, I definitely feel this, that you were probably in the right of this, that's my opinion. But coming down the road, if Mr. Palmer wants to come back and do this, at what point do we feel like he's, you know, do we, is it a couple of years, three years, or is there, do we have a standard that would bring us up to where we felt comfortable? He's got a lot of, I mean, I would say, hey, anybody can go out and get a bunch of, you know, a bunch of letters, but these are, these are, I know most of the companies in this list that have used his services. And so, you know, I'm not, definitely not trying to support or justify his behavior, but there's a lot of, you know, well-known, local, you know, good businesses in these letters that I read, and I just thought, wow, how does a guy who gets this many recommendations have this, this thing? So, but it is, it's here, it's a finished court case, and it is what it is. So, what would we expect down the road? How does that, how does redemption look?
Okay. The ordinance doesn't provide a hard and fast rule that says after X number of years, we, in essence, don't look at that again. So, what I would say is the opportunity arises, I would say when we go back through, get to the end of the current contracts, I'd have to check, I'm sure I'd have to defer to Deputy Chief Mansfield to see if those are one-year or two-year arrangements, two-year arrangements. And at the end of those, you would typically then expect, open it up again for those to be considered. And so, at that point, gives, provides an opportunity for Mr. Palmer to reapply and for him to be reconsidered. And whether or not these charges would, in essence, would look past these and say, okay, redemption can occur at this point, it's hard to say.
Right.
I think, and that's a, that's a really tough judgment call, because what you're looking for is an opportunity for someone to demonstrate over a period of time...
Right.
...a change in practice or habit, or whatever that might be. And, you know, it's always a possibility, if that's been demonstrated with no complaints that we're aware of, that would be easier to consider than if there were complaints in that two-year period of time.
Sure.
But that would be the opportunity, is at the next time where we're looking at renewals and folks resubmitting for the service?
Sure, sure.
I would just have one last question for Mr. Palmer. And that is, on, all of these references were from business, from business, from businesses?
Private businesses, yes.
The, the cases that came out of, that gave rise to the, to the convictions?
Yes, sir.
Were they, did they involve the business vehicles, or were they privately owned citizens, individuals?
Privately owned.
Individuals?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the state, it would seem odd to me that if these were related to your, to your business, does the state have any way of, I mean, would the state, I would think that this was the kind of thing that maybe the state would remove his ability... that this was the kind of thing that maybe the state would remove his ability to be, I mean, this is kind of a sacred cow of towing. You know, you tow a vehicle, and if a person comes back and you've sold off their vehicle, and you did it through fraudulent documents, or, I mean, whatever it was, it's, again, I don't know the details, I'm just kind of trying to read here, but I, does the state come in and say, hey, wait a second? That's, I mean, obviously, they came in on one aspect of it, but do they come in on the licensing aspect and say, hey, you can on a towing yard? And?
No.
They don't, they don't come in and, there's no regulation on that?
I mean, what I can say, one, I can say about these vehicles, they were vehicles that, the process that we did is a process that towing services do render to obtain titles. The same process can be done through an attorney. And the attorney's fees are astronomical to do it. And that's what I can say about that.
Looks like somebody else is wanting to come up and speak.
Go ahead. You've got something to say. Go ahead. This is the time.
I'm going to say exactly what happened. My name is Joyce Palmer. 7925 West Pleasant Hill Road. Roy is my husband. I am going to tell you exactly what happened in this situation. It had nothing to do with rotation. It did involve a person who bought vehicles that came with no titles. He asked Roy, is there a way to get the titles? And that's what Roy was doing, was obtaining titles, where, you know, he can't go through a lawyer and pay fees. In the long run, what ended up? He got the titles to his trucks through a lawyer rather than Roy. Same outcome. As when it comes to the towing for rotation, private individuals. There is nothing, I'm the office manager. I am not going to stand for anything crooked. I have never even had a freaking speeding ticket in my life. I don't, I'm going to go by the book, because I don't want to get in trouble. That was just something he did for one of his acquaintances. Had nothing to do with towing cars for the police. And he's learned his lesson. And I can guarantee you, I know about things, I'm not going to let him do it again. So I just wanted to say that, because I just feel like everybody's prancing around what the real issue was.
Sure.
And to me, just to an individual, what the outcome was for this guy getting titles to his two trucks, he got them, whether it was through Roy or a lawyer. Yeah, I know he went against the rules, against the laws, but there was no harm or foul to anybody. They weren't stolen trucks, and he was getting them licensed for somebody. They were some, the guy legitimately purchased, that they just came with no titles.
Lost title.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out in the open, because I just feel like he's being treated like such a horrible person, when he, all he wants to do is help people.
Sure.
And like I said, he has improved the rotation by, you know, if somebody's not showing up, they'll call the next one in line, because he, he is, that's all he wants to do, is just get out there and help people. There's, get a call, he goes. And I have heard some stories, you know, I can't substantiate, because the people themselves will not come forward, of where they've had to wait 45 minutes for a wrecker, when they were told it would be 20 minutes. They call us, we still get there before the one who was called 45 minutes before. So I think we can do a good job on the rotation, and I don't feel what he did, because I'm not going to let anything happen in that office. There is laws, there's rules, there's paperwork that I see to it that is done properly. We don't sell cars unless we've gone through all the proper channels. And that's all I guess I want to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Commissioners, for clarification, a couple of things. One is, is that I didn't say that he did it as part of our towing for us.
Right.
It's just part of the towing operation. The other thing is, is that we didn't look at the details of what happened, because I'm not in a position to have highway patrol officers come and testify before me and so forth.
Right.
So we rely strictly on the court's ruling on the issue, and that's how it's brought to you.
Right, right. Yeah, and I didn't gather that when you were speaking.
Yeah, I don't judge those details.
Right.
We're not able to do that.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions for staff? Any other public comment on this matter?
I'd like to add one thing. I do not feel that the police department does their enforcing or enforcement on the rotation regulations like it's supposed to be according to their regulation book. There's nobody to enforce or make sure that the rules and regs are enforced, because there's issues with the, with the towing services that are on rotation, that have been in violation since day one. And if the enforcement crew was to look at the rules and regulations, nobody would be on the rotation.
I just think if you have any information on that, I would think probably forward it to the city manager or Officer Mansfield, just to make sure that, you know, so they know about it. I mean, because we, our whole reason of bringing the standards was for that. We wanted to make sure that that was it, and we expect everybody to play by the same playing field. So if there's something out there, I would say, just, you know, bring it to them, and I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
My name's Larry Bridle, from 5844 Dorthe Barkley Road. I've been in the heavy-duty truck repair business in this town for close to 35 years. Been using Palmer Towing since a little bit after they come to town. And they are, what my company I work for presently is one of the references there. Two other ones that I've worked for previously, I know for sure one of them's in there. I've managed three different repair shops in this town. Palmer Towing is the preferred tow company of, printer every, every trucking business in this town that I know of uses them. Nationwide, Swift, CR England, but every semi-fleet you see going down the road, this national fleet, they're the number one on their tow service. I know it doesn't have a thing to do with the city rotation, but you don't tow $150, $200,000 rigs if you have a background or problem of being dishonest with them. There is nobody I'll send out on a rollover wreck other than Palmer's in this town. I've seen trucks that was rolled, laid over on their sides with very little damage, be almost totally destroyed by other wrecker companies trying to set them up. Doesn't happen with this towing company. My personal vehicles, my family's vehicles, if they're involved in any kind of a wreck in this town, nobody's allowed to tow them except Palmer Towing. It's happened a few times, thank goodness, not very many, but to kick them off the rotation, I know you got your rules set, but I think you need to take a very good look at that and not be waiting two or three years. That was a mistake made, it's in the past, you know. I just don't like seeing anybody getting put down like that for something that they've already taken care of, but as far as a honest business in this town, that's the only one we use, and that's a lot of other people. Like he said, a lot of them companies in there, he knows who they are. You don't get that kind of reputation by being a crook, or dishonest, or not taking care of the customers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Commissioners, real quick, we're already, this was the original selection process for the rotation. We're already about a year beyond that, so the timeframe you're looking at is roughly plus or minus a year before they could be reconsidered.
Sure.
Not the full two years.
Sure.
Did Mr. Anderson, did you give the mayor the document you were referring to?
I got my one copy of that.
Okay. Was that, may I ask, was that the complaint?
Was that what?
Was that the complaint? I'm just trying to make sure we are all on the same page in terms of what information everybody is considering.
Okay.
I wasn't exactly sure. That's the warrant physicalist issue.
And then I have the journal entry at the end.
Okay. And that's, that's the document, is that the one that's shown as intercut April 2nd?
Yes.
May I also add that we do business with the city also? Some entities within the city, and they would not put a reference on paper because of results of what could happen if they did.
Okay, results such as?
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, your thoughts are, it wouldn't look good that we use you for towing service.
Correct, correct.
But, yeah. Well, I mean, I could, I mean, I could see a difference there. I mean, I can understand, we're, our whole purpose was to protect the public if, I mean, I, maybe we're a little bit.
I mean, but the city, you know, they kind of entrust us to take care of their heavy-duty needs as they need them. You know, some of your equipment's over a million dollars.
The reason I ask the question is that, of course, in the interest of due process, which is why you do not have the documents from staff prior to the, and the reason I asked Mr. Palmer about what document he had was so that we can be sure what that was. Deputy Chief Mansfield has provided me with the affidavit in what was the amended complaint. I think it is certainly with, as you carry out your responsibility, it's certainly your prerogative, I think, to determine what documents you want to see when you want to consider them, and not necessarily feel pressed to complete that analysis today, if that's a concern to you. If you do want to go forward and do so today, we should probably make sure that we have all the documents that we want you to have. And I don't know that Gage had provided the references to your considerations. So we've got quite a few documents floating around, and we need to be sure that everybody's on the same page.
Right.
As to what you are looking at.
Right.
Or what you want to look at. And so that was, that was my.
And I'd like to ask, no matter what the city commissioner's decision is, I would like to have something that, a timeframe on the forgiveness of what we did
Sure.
from the city.
Yeah, I don't know if that's necessary, if that's possible in a direct thing, and that's why I tried to get kind of an answer. And I know that's a difficult decision for the city manager to sort of make, because in a way, he takes responsibility, as we've entrusted him to be that gauge, so to speak, of that, of that threshold. And if we should, you know, I suppose we could give him, I mean, that's what this is about, we could give him direction and say, and then we take that responsibility. If something like this were to happen again, then it's on us. So I think to try and put a timeframe would probably be pretty difficult.
What if we put the timeframe of the next application?
Well, he can sure apply, I think. I mean, I definitely think that that's, we would encourage you to do so.
Yeah, I think that's correct, Commissioners. At the end of the contract period for the two current providers, which is, I'm going to say plus or minus a year without seeing the dates in front of me, we would go through a selection process again, and that's his opportunity to reapply. So there would be that opportunity to look at it. But Commissioner Householder is correct, I can't say for any of them whether they would be selected at that point in time, just because I don't know what's going to happen between now and then. But that is the opportunity to look at it again. And if I may look at it, and I could say I feel comfortable, recommend him, and he's in the rotation, or I could at that point, again, say, I just don't feel comfortable, and then if he appeals, you'd have the opportunity to say, but you do, and you certainly have that opportunity to do that, and that's the way the process is intended to work.
Does this, and I'll just wait for this question, because I, this doesn't address you, so.
Can I ask you, well, if the city was to have a situation that possibly one of the tow services on the rotation was to have a problem with their contract, you got two of them on there, one, both, both them towing services can handle all your small, possibly medium-duty toes, and you got one of them towing services that can handle small, medium, and heavy duty. What would happen if, for who knows what reason, they needed a heavy-duty tow truck for an emergency situation due to the other towing service that's on rotation that can handle the heavy duties, is preoccupied with another wreck, an emergency somewhere else? What's the city position on that situation then?
Wow, I think it's a good question.
I would think that there's still the opportunity that the particular person can request.
Right.
Okay, but what happens if that person is in a hospital? What happens if the fire department calls and they got an extrication of a vehicle, a person that's underneath a truck that's on top of a car?
I don't know what the legal implications that are, but that, we're looking at things like that in those hypotheticals. We're looking at, we're not looking at the
What if?
common, we're looking at the exception. We're not looking at the, kind of what the rule is, but the exception. And so I think with any of these ordinances that we have, we're trying to look at establishing sort of a set of guidelines and rules to follow. This particular one leaves that discretion of appropriateness to the city manager's office. I mean, that's why we're here. We have the ultimate decision. But we have that because we want to place everything on a level playing field. So we, so when we look at, well, what ifs, then I think we start to kind of get out of, how do we equally apply this to everybody? And, you know, because we have to start with a reasonable set of factors. And I think that if we were a bigger city, I think that only having two probably would start to, I think that those would be less hypothetical and more, you know, possible. Maybe not probable, but they could be a possibility. But I think that that's probably the best that I, answer I could give you on that. Thank you.
Commissioners, what if we, I don't know the formality, but what if we table this for?
Two weeks?
Well, maybe two weeks or even three, and then have time to circulate all of the documents, so we know for sure what we're looking at and being fair.
I am, I have a little difficulty with this, this being conviction, no matter what the documents say. I'm ready tonight to say, I think we should uphold the judgment of city manager Gage in this regard, and, but allow for the applicant to reapply when the next contract comes up.
Yeah, I would kind of agree.
That'd be okay, too.
I think, you know, Mr. Palmer, you seem like a really nice guy. I suppose provided it wasn't my trucks, if there was a problem, but I mean, you know, that here and there, you've got a lot of good references here. I'm sure regardless, you've learned your lesson. I bet you won't be doing that again anytime soon for however much you charge your friend, if you even charge, and that'd probably be the crux of the matter. He's a buddy, you probably may have even done it for free, and then you end up with this, so, but if you didn't, it probably wasn't enough money, whatever it was. And so, you know, you obviously have some community support here, but I definitely feel like the city manager was well within what our intentions were relayed to him about doing our best to protect the public interest with these, with the towing companies. And I agree, I mean, I think, you know, I think we got to support him, but I would encourage you to reapply when that opportunity comes up, and, you know, and again, I don't think there's a timeframe that could come with that. Just, you know, continue to do excellent business practices. Just, you know, continue to do excellent business practices, more public support, you know, any, anything that you can do to, to help with your case when it comes to reapply. I think it can only, it can only help you. And it didn't seem like you had a shortage of getting well-known quality businesses to, to support you. I think, you know, continue to do that and continue to do, to do the best job that you can do. And, and, you know, that would be my stance on it.
Commissioners, just for a couple of things. One is, is that the, based on the way the ordinance is written, I want to make sure it's clear. He has an inherent right to apply when that comes open again. There's nothing that says you cannot apply.
Right, sure, sure.
I just want to make sure that, that he's aware of that, that, because with the thought that you don't have to take action that says he's allowed to apply. He is allowed.
He is allowed, sure, sure. I'm just more encouraging him, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and so the action, what you have in front of you is you do have the denial. So your action is if you should choose to want to overrule, that would be your action. If you don't do that, then the denial would stand. So you don't have to sustain, it's, it's there, that action is there. The only action would be if you would want to overrule, which you certainly have a right to do, that would be your action.
So there's no need to act?
Well, I would just add too, because I appreciate you coming down here and, and making the application.
Clarification on the sustain.
Mr. Gage asked me a question. I believe I wasn't clear in what I was trying to articulate. You would not have to act in order for this action to stand. I do think that it is, if I'm understanding the thoughts articulated, it is preferable if you would wish to take an action to do so. Make clear to everyone. And along the other line of Mr. Gage's point.
I, I want to be abundantly clear as well. Am I correct that while we are encouraging the application, as is, Mr. Palmer's right, as Mr. Gage pointed out, am I correct in my understanding your intent that there is not, however, a presumption of qualification? And that you are not directing or attempting to limit the city manager's discretion at that point in time?
No, that's not my, yeah, not my intention. I mean, I think Mr. Palmer needs to, to, if, if the city manager so feels in a year that he's okay with what, what's been brought to him, then he can make the decision that's, that's, he feels is, is best.
Can I do, make one more comment on? Most rotations in most cities do have a specific time that when you, they do have an issue with that towing service that they're penalized for, and when that timeframe is up, they usually go back on the rotation.
On there?
On your rotation, that's correct.
So you just need general direction from us? You don't really need a motion, you just need sort of each of us to say?
You can make a motion.
Oh, I think it would be best, if you're going to act, it would be best by motion.
Okay.
I'll just make a motion that, that we uphold the denial of the appeal from the applicant by the city manager.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion does carry five to zero. Move on to consent agenda, please.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of August 19, 2013. Item six point two, resolution number 137036, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
Is there anything a commissioner would like to amend or take off the agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as is. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero. We have no development business, so on it administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number 13-10,714, changing the zoning district classification from unzoned railroad right-of-way to PDD I two in the Foxborough addition.
Hey, ordinance number 13 dash 10714 was passed on first reading on August 19, 2013. Since that time, no comments have been received. Have any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
This is a second reading.
Right, still need a motion and a second and a roll call.
Oh.
Correct, motion, second roll call, okay.
I move that we pass on second reading ordinance number 13-10714.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Blanchard?
No.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
No.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
Item eight point two, resolution number 137032, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Casa Industrial Controls Incorporated.
Mr. Binkston?
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. This is an opportunity to see the successful completion of an industrial revenue bond project. In 2002, the city issued IRBs to finance the cost of acquiring, remodeling, and equipping an existing industrial facility for Casa Industrial Controls at 305 East Avenue B. Due to interest rate fluctuations in 2007, a new issue was made of repayment bonds so that they could take advantage of a change in interest rates. Under Kansas law, the IRBs are structured such that the city actually takes title to the real estate as, to secure the performance of the repayment, repayment of the bonds. Those are paid from lease payments that are then paid by the developer over the term of the bonds. And then at the end of that period of time, the developer has the opportunity to repurchase the facility for nominal consideration, in this case, $100. But it's on the basis of having paid off the bonds through those lease payments. So we're at the end of that process, and your action today is to authorize the transfer of title back to the developer along with the bill of sale related to the equipment that was purchased with those proceeds. And so that's the matter before you.
Okay. Any questions for staff? None? Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 13 dash 7032, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Casa Industrial Controls Incorporated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item eight point three, resolution number 137034, asking our federal congressional leadership and Kansas congressional delegation to preserve the tax exempt status of municipal bonds as they consider the 2014 concurrent budget resolution.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. This is basically an advisory type resolution. And as the federal government does contemplate your 2014 budget, there have been serious discussions about either capping or eliminating altogether the tax exempt status of municipal bonds. And cities and schools and counties, other government organizations have been able to utilize those since 1913. And they provide a, a nice advantage for us in getting folks to invest in our bonds and basically invest in our communities and our infrastructure. So what this does is it, this action, the attached resolution asks the federal government and specifically the leadership of the House and Senate and our congressional delegation to support preserving the tax exempt status of municipal bonds. That's the real short of it. We have the resolution attached, and your options would be to approve that resolution or if you should choose not to, not to approve it.
Any questions for Mr. Gage?
Yeah, just a real quick one. Could you give us some, tick off some different types of municipal bonds that, that would be eligible? That are tax exempt?
Yeah, specifically general obligation bonds are what we're talking about.
And what, and that represents a, what part of our, what part of our debt is general obligation bonds?
It's by far the majority part of our debt.
Okay.
Again, when we're thinking about things like road, for us, it's mostly roads, roadways. That's the, probably the biggest investment, bridges come into play. It could be for certain facilities and things. As opposed to, a lot of times with utilities, you'll see revenue bonds, which are a little different. But our general obligation bonds are, build our roads. And then, and actually, in many situations, they do actually, we can use them for utilities, and we've done that before as well. So it's the core infrastructure of our community.
Any other questions?
No, I just thanks, thank, thank you, Jason, for putting this together. I appreciate that.
That's why we pay him the big bucks.
Yeah.
Probably doesn't seem like enough some days, I guess.
I'd go ahead and entertain a motion.
Public comment?
Or sorry, public comment on this one? Okay.
Just making sure.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution number 13 dash 7034, asking our federal congressional leadership and Kansas congressional delegation to preserve the tax exempt status of municipal bonds as they consider the 2014 concurrent budget resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item eight point four, resolution number 137035, asking the Kansas Corporation Commission to deny Westar Energy's application for electricity rate increase for 2014.
Mr. Gage again?
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. This is another advocacy type thing. I think I said advisory before, I meant advocacy, but tonight's growing long. Westar Energy has filed an application to increase, to have a, what averages out to be 1.7% increase in their rates for the retail customers for this year. But it also reallocates among the various rate paying types. And for example, residential bills are estimated by them to increase 8.77%. Small general service bills, which would be most of your commercial business entities in town, 6.18%. And then they have a decrease of 6% for the medium general service bills, which would be larger companies. The high load factor industrial bills would go down 8.38%. Public school bills would decrease by 7.61%. And they have some, apparently a couple of special contract customers that must be very large customers. These rates would go down 15.1%. So there's a reallocation, and a lot of this has to do with what you think about the reallocation, quite honestly. They also, as part of this whole deal, they have proposed an economic development fund and low income assistance fund. So those are good things. Overall, they estimate the direct cost impact of this rate change to the average residential customer to be on a 900 kilowatt hour use of electricity per month, to be about $7.50 per month, or about $90 a year. And of course, that'll vary from house to house. Recently, the Slyna Airport Authority did pass a resolution opposing the rate increase and primarily is because they fall under the small general service account. And that would give them about a 6% or $25,000 increase for their buildings. And so I think that's what really brought this to our attention, is it's been out for a little while. But there's still adequate time if you should choose to ask Westar to not, or the Kansas Corporation Commission to not approve Westar's requested rate increase. You're certainly able to do that, and that's what this is. And if you should make, take that action, we'll forward that to the Kansas Corporation Commission.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter?
Yvonne?
I know what she's waiting for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know why Yvonne's here.
I thought you were here for this one. I'm sorry, yeah.
I will, though, point out that in the, in the resolution, and Commissioner Hardy didn't catch this one, I did, so.
We have another wordhound up.
He'll probably be proud of me for this one. But in the whereas is they're just two typos and, and the, the third and fourth whereas. I think the spell check didn't catch the vein, it should be B. So I'll provide that to the clerk and I'll.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'd move to adopt this resolution with a, with a lightning bolt. 13 dash 7035, asking the Kansas Corporation Commission to deny the approval of docket number 13 dash WSEE dash 629 dash RTS, Westar's proposed electricity rate increase for 2014.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero.
With the, with the stated amendments, I'm sorry.
Or the corrections.
Stated corrections. I assume that's what you, what I meant.
Onward and upward.
Item eight point five, resolution number 137030, responding both to the Sling, to Sling County's rejection of the city's Slyna-Saline County building proposal and their respective counterproposal.
Mr. Gage, again?
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Before I get into this one, you, you were flowing along real well, and I hate to interrupt that. But there is something that came up today and it has to do with the interpretation of our proposal and the county's proposal, county, their proposal prior to this, that really prompts us to need to go into executive session for attorney-client purposes. However, the good news is, is we think that we can cover the topic in 10 minutes and get you right back out.
Good, because I was going to make, make a motion that we order pizza.
Or steal whatever they're eating. They're eating, it smells good.
Somebody's seen something in the other room over there.
It smells really good.
Going on.
So we need attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes?
Yeah, try 10 minutes, see if we can get you in and out. Get back.
Great. Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege. For the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 7:05 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.
They agree in.
Here so long, we have a new police officer on our watch.
Yeah, they changed shifts.
I thought I'd say hi at least, thank you. I did notice. Now if we get a third one in, we're in trouble. Back from executive session, it is 7:08. We can go ahead and continue, and we will move on to item eight point five. Anyone? Bueller? Is there a clerk over there?
Eight point five, resolution number 137030, responding both to the Sling County's rejection of the city's Slyna-Saline County building proposal and their respective counterproposal.
Mr. Gage?
Okay, thank you, mayor and commissioners. This issue's been beat up pretty good over the last few weeks, so I'm not going to give you a tremendous amount of background but I'll just cover it generally. The condition of the existing health department building, as you know, has been a major concern both for the city and the county over the past, over a year. Since July 1 of this year, the city's offered four proposals to Sling County related to the building. The first three were rejected. Each came with various counterproposals being submitted back to the city. The last building proposal submitted by the city was approved in concept through communication by Sling County. As a result, the city's legal counsel has drafted the attached agreement that you have, and that outlines settlement terms related to the repair of the health department building roof in the city's interest. I'll just hit the primary terms, and then I'll defer, as I finish here, to Greg with regards to anything specific that he'd like to, that deals with the legal aspects he'd like to highlight. In, in the settlement agreement that you have, the city and Sling County both agree to contribute $500,000 to be applied to the roof repair. We anticipate the total cost will be somewhere in a million, maybe slightly more than a million dollars. The city's portion is to be paid within five business days, days of execution of the agreement. The city also agrees that $250,000 from the health department reserve funds may be applied at Sling County's discretion for additional roof repair costs, remodeling, and any other costs associated with reestablishment of the operation of the building, basically being building-related at the county's discretion. The balance of the reserve funds upon paying all encumbered costs will be distributed to the city and county in accordance with the provisions of the joint resolution. All personal property and fixtures will remain with the property and become the property of Sling County. Terms addressing the general settlement and release liability is agreed upon between the city's legal counsel and county counselor included and can be elaborated upon by the city's legal counsel. The agreement reemphasizes the city's separate and distinct building and code enforcement role. We didn't want to mix those, we feel those are distinct. The agreement does not anticipate any form of joint relationship for health department operations between the city and county, being formed and officially terminates the memorandum of understanding previously entered into by the parties that address building and site maintenance and insurance. So in essence, this really formalizes, if anything, the dissolution. But I think one could easily argue that the establishment of the tax rates that occurred by Sling County last week and the city then, this week, really has done that. Fiscal note, the fiscal impact is $500,000 directly from sales tax revenues. Excuse me, the remaining $250,000 that is contributed from the health department reserve funds isn't exactly a cost, although in dissolution, the city would have gotten a percentage of that we estimate to be approximately 57% or about $142,000. So that you give up to, in essence, make this work for the benefit of both parties. Following options are available for city commission consideration, approve resolution 13 dash 7030 or do not approve that resolution at this time. Be happy to answer any questions. And again, if, Greg, if you have any aspect of this that you'd like to reemphasize or point their attention to.
does have one change in the recitals and one change in the text of the document, uh, leaving open the potential for the county to utilize Dr. Pykel as the engineering is done on the ultimate design, the roof repair. That language has been put in clearly so that it's up to the discretion of the county in terms of how they approach that work, and of course, Dr. Pykel's discretion as to whether he, I mean, takes that work. But in each case, or if, if that would be the case, there's a language there that distinguishes the role he served for the city from the role he served for the county and, uh, the other language that addresses that situation.
So, uh, be, uh, be happy to answer any questions. Uh, the resolution simply is authorizing, uh, the mayor to execute the, uh, settlement agreement and release document.
Do we still have that last? We, we sent over something with, uh, our version of what the new inter-local agreement would look like to them. Is that still hanging out there as a potential?
Well.
I mean, even though we've set our tax rates and all, and we're doing away with this building and all, there's an opportunity that the county could look at that inter-local agreement and say, you know, it looks like a pretty good idea, this higher taxes, I mean, is there, is that still hanging out there? I, I just don't know what the status that is anymore.
I guess technically it is. I mean, at any time in the future, if both entities wanted to, to come back together, you could do that. Uh, my understanding is that they sort of had some issues on how to vote on that, and as a result, it, uh, well, it wasn't, it definitely wasn't voted in. There's a question about a second and whether it was a second or what it was, but in essence, there wasn't a formal second, time ran out. Um, it, I believe the motion died for lack of a second, therefore, that issue's, it may be considered dead at this point. I'm not, I'm not sure officially where it's at, but they weren't interested in the last meeting.
Yes, I'm, from their standpoint, uh, I would understand them to have articulated the position that they have rejected it, and in so doing, takes it off the table in terms of any proposal as presented by the city from a formal legal standpoint. Uh, we've had no formal communication, I don't believe, other than the account of the, uh, the motion that failed, uh, but I understood that they articulated the position that that was, in effect, a rejection of that proposal.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter? Okay, go ahead and bring that back to my commissioners.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve resolution number one three dash seven zero three zero, responding to both to Celine County's rejection of the city's Salinas-Celine County building proposal and the respective counter proposal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Um, and I just want to say that since I was always, uh, definitely in favor of us being together, that I'm just appalled at, at the refusal of the county commission to work together with the city of Salina to continue to fund the health department. They have raised their taxes, your taxes and my taxes, by two mils to fund the health department. If an agreement had been reached, our taxes would not have had to be raised by two mils. I think that all advocates out there for children and families, um, should be equally appalled and very upset. Um, the city has for several years kept its mill levy, levy at, at or near, um, the same level while the county has continued each year since two thousand and eight to raise taxes, and I think the taxpayers should be up in arms.
I think that's very well said. Kay and I echo those, and I'm, I'm embarrassed for the county, honestly, and I'll go on record saying it, I think they're an embarrassment.
The, uh, there is a, an additional thought I've just had recently, and that is that, um, in order for them to, um, legally, um, budget for the health department, they should have rate, increased their mill levy more than two mils. They did not do that. They decided to take the, the mill levy to two mils to avoid the protest petition, and then to look at other places in their budget for the funds to fully fund the health department. My worry or concern is that what happens next year? Uh, if, they should have almost been somewhere north of three mils for the health department to fully fund it, uh, and now they're going to, they only have two mils and whatever else they can come up with. Um, I'm hoping that they will continue to, to be good stewards of the health department down the road, even though the mill levy would not indicate that.
I concur, I, cause I believe that they stated that they would not cut services, they would not cut employees, that they would fully fund that health department, so I think their feet need to be held to the fire, and I, I just, uh, I hope that they were, were and continue to be sincere in that regard.
We'll see.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
Nope.
Other business?
Oh, we're not done.
Other business, I want to point out.
Oh, good.
Now, not, not to toot my own horn, but I want to say that this weekend, there was, there were some volunteers down at, uh, Five Corners. We had, it was Friday, and I hope Gary Hobby clocked out and he wasn't collecting pay while he was working down there, but he was down, uh, Mr. Hobby was down, uh, driving with a little front loader, what do they call that thing? A little baby bobcat?
Skid steer.
Skid steer, yeah, whatever. And, uh, and Darren Wright, uh, one of the city employees, was out, uh, digging, and, uh, Commissioner Blanchard was there, uh, driving a, some kind of little thing that grabs dirt and moves it someplace else.
Shovel.
And I, and I, and I had to do my community service part. They needed somebody to hold the rake up, so I was there, uh.
Leaning on the rake.
I was leaning on the rake. They asked me if I got any blisters, and I said, well, if you can get one from under your armpit for leaning on a rake.
You can.
I did get one, so they were working away at that, and it's a process, and I would just, you know, there's not much to see there now, but I think if you drive up there on Ninth and, and Broadway and Pacific there, adolescent, knows the Five Corners, you'll see the work beginning, and it's a similar process to what we're looking at doing, uh, that we discussed with the Magnolia Road, um, landscaping, so it'd be kind of a similar thing. It should be really, really neat, and, uh, there was a lot of Methodist volunteers out there. Um, Barb Young was up there.
North Slene Community Development.
Yeah, ba- basically, a whole, whole bunch of them, and, uh, really a neat thing, and I gotta say, I, I walked away, I'm pretty useless, I gotta admit. I was out there about thirty minutes, and I just thought landscapers are the most underpaid people on the face of the earth, because it is hard work. I mean, I wasn't even working, and I was dying, but, uh, really neat, and, and you walk away inspired, and you just see the community and people honking, and, and, and really, I, I started looking at all those spaces down that whole corridor and thought, if we could just start, yeah, we could start doing this, if we could, uh, you know, there's so many more spaces to do this around town, and it's just, is a real improvement, and it's coming from, from basically volunteers and, and, and donated money and projects, and, I mean, it's really a, a neat deal and, and, uh, was really inspiring, so hopefully it's the first of, of many, and I just wanted to, I, like I said, I rolled up and there he was riding, I thought, oh, this second, this guy, he's serious, you know, he's serious. He's not getting paid, he's out here doing his thing, and, and.
He's a pro.